So I call this meeting to order, it's like seven oh two. So welcome to the July rendition of our Board of Library trustee meeting. Hope everybody's been enjoying the summer. Roger Trahan couldn't make it today, so we'll just get started, I guess. Anybody else have any comments before we get going?
I'd just like to apologize for causing the scheduling mishap, um so that's all.
Yeah.
We have this great adventure now.
Oh yeah, there are new locations uh.
Yes, that's right.
It is good to have another location.
Yeah, there was different, I mean it wasn't just John, but just between
I mean this is nice. It's easy.
the logistics of the agenda, the logistics of the room, it just I mean you guys probably saw a lot of it, but thank you for allowing us and I apologize to Cindy already because she actually showed up last week at the meeting, didn't see that hidden cancel.
Oh.
And in that, but in that, and so I talked to her for a while and she was fine and she told me she couldn't make this week, but um the strange thing is, is the meeting is on the calendar, like I think it's already been on the town calendar like through the end of the year, but the agendas aren't posted. And so when John was like posting agenda, like it was weird because they said there's no agenda and I'm like yes, there is and that's when we discovered there was actually a I think a slight hiccup in the way that the town has been putting stuff on the calendar. So we got that fixed, solved down, so.
So it's actually made sense.
Yeah.
How about though?
So the minutes continue to be a challenge, but I think which um there was only one set that we were able to do.
Did he, does that agree?
No, there was minutes that I think Roger completed as well. Right?
Uh.
And we're.
He he did, no, he said that he was gonna um, yeah, he he was gonna.
I would say intended to with deny.
Correct?
April third and April twenty fourth, those are your meeting minutes.
Right, so he was gonna do the executive session in court date with me, but he didn't get a chance to, he's on, he's on vacation and I didn't get a chance to do it and
He didn't get to do that.
I do apologize, I know that they are important and I will prioritize getting those those done.
Yeah, cause there's also, I don't know, three or four others besides these two that are short term.
Oh, I see.
So yeah, the only agenda that got sent out that Roger did was the June eighteenth.
No, I did those.
Yeah, that's that's what I said.
Oh, oh, thank you, that's right, Erin did those, yes. Um so did everyone get a chance to read those and did anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Um Sarah had told me just now to point out that Cindy had told her that she was uh like a guest at that meeting. And so I don't know if that's
Well, so then we could just, so so the way that was presented, um when I watched the meeting
we we don't want to.
was we asked for public comment and we said, oh, somebody from the public and she didn't have anything to say.
Okay.
Right, so she was kinda there as a member of the public, um you know, not an official attendee to the meeting. I mean, would everybody agree?
Yeah. Although she's, I think she's like the union representative, that's the other.
She's a union representative, so I think, I think just, just to say that she
That's the other.
she attended as the union representative, but she didn't have any comment.
Do we generally do that? Because she's been
Well, that's been new.
I think we should probably discuss that.
Good question.
Is that, that's that's brand new.
I think.
I mean, well, she's been attending the meetings for over a year.
Oh, I think.
And we haven't included that on the agenda.
Well, since since the fall, but
I I think we need to discuss it, is what I'm saying, cause I think she's not there as a public, she's there as a representative as well.
I'm not sure if we had any of this.
Yeah. So anyway, was there a motion made?
Okay.
I don't think there was a motion made, was there?
No.
Sorry.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
Am I allowed to accept, vote to accept meetings that I was not present at? Cause there was a couple from
If you've read them, if you've read through them?
And he he was in there, he was there.
I was, I was actually, it was from April, it was before I was left.
Well, then then probably not, I don't know.
Do I abstain? I don't know what the right thing to do is.
We're we're not ready to vote on that anyways.
Okay, anyway, alright, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, um so
But you don't need to.
I'd say two options, we could um, well, we can obviously discuss it, but we could accept the minutes as is, we could accept them by amending them and adding the name. Or we can defer it to next month.
I I would say we should keep it simpler and leave her off, um just since like if she, if she's there to actually speak and stuff, I'd be happy to have her, but if it's
Yeah, so, yeah, so why don't we, I hate to discuss when we haven't made a motion
Sure.
and seconded, right?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the June eighteenth, um twenty twenty four minutes.
Second.
Um so moved and seconded?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I I can't. So now, this is when we can talk about, okay, okay.
Correct, about the specific motion.
Yeah.
So I feel that it's important because she did make the effort to attend the meeting as a union representative. I don't think it's, I don't think there's anything major we need to say, but just say that she was present there in the role of the union representative.
I I agree with that.
So, yeah, so I think if we wanna include input from the union, we should include on the agenda. Not as like a public comment. Um and and generally like if a public, if if someone from the public was there and they had a comment, we would call them out and they and they would be specifically in the minutes.
Right, but if a public person came and didn't say anything and just listened the whole time, we would never know that.
And That's that's what she did, so.
But she did greet us and say, I'm here representing the union, so she did talk to us, I mean it wasn't probably on the televised portion, but
Right, but.
she did tell us she is there as a, she wasn't there as just random Joe member of the public, she was there as a union representative.
Well, I guess that's a question, do we, do we normally list out members of the public who provide input?
Only if there was a specific topic on the agenda that they were contributing to, like if they were proposing something or coming to us to ask something.
Just in the future, could we just decide what we wanna do in the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Because I feel, I feel that the union, I think they're, they've, she's coming to the meetings for a reason and I think there's no reason for us not to acknowledge her. And that way, there's communication flow and we're not, you know, we're we're trying, we're being agreeable.
Mm-hmm.
And now that we realize, we, you know, we hadn't discussed this prior to that, that's my, that's my take on it.
Okay.
So I guess we have to vote on the current one, right, first?
Um
Or someone, or.
Or we, or we're
I thought we were gonna.
So there's a motion on the table for as is, right?
Yep.
We can decide if we wanna amend it.
Amended.
And then um we can do another motion for the amended minutes.
So would someone like to make a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to document that Cindy, um Cindy attended as a representative of the union.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay. Any other addition on the proposed amendment? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Um so we will submit the agenda of that amendment to it.
Would you like me to adjust the minutes?
That would be great.
Okay, and I'll send them to you.
Great.
Yep, cause you're gonna submit the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Very good.
And I don't, do we, do we need to um name the person or just say union rep?
I think it's important to um decide that we're gonna do this going forward, cause we haven't decided that yet.
Go forward, right. Yep, yep.
Just, we just decided to amend the minutes, so um I think that if Sarah's here, then we should agree that if a union representative is here every meeting, that we should include them in the minutes. Right, is that what we're all deciding?
Yeah, like based on the current.
And 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 I think it's a good suggestion going forward to include it as agenda, cause we can kind of do a check in with the union representative as part of our formal meeting agenda, I think that would probably make sense.
Okay, and how about our other member of the the library staff here, how would we include her in the minutes, if all?
Yeah. I I would say she's just like general public for tonight at least. We would not mention her, she's not representing the union.
Well, she's probably doing a specific duty, she's probably ask her.
So while under public comment, if it's not an agenda item.
Under, yeah, if she is. Yeah, if she speaks up during public input, then she would definitely be on the agenda.
Or if there's an agenda item that includes her.
Correct.
Very good.
Um I will check, I don't know if our like if hearing union update isn't even in our purview. Right, I mean, I think it it's good information for us to hear, but is there anything that the trustees would be able to act on if they came?
Well, no, but we don't, weren't we told about, weren't we given some updates as far as their ratification of their
That usually came from one of the trustees, based on what that person read and cause some of that, some of that discussion was in the select board minutes and that trustee had read the select board minutes and just kinda conveyed that information to us.
Okay. I don't have the answer to that, but I think, I I I don't, I guess I think we definitely should do what we're saying is know that they were attending, because if Cindy, if the, if she had something to say to us, she would, correct?
Correct.
That's why, I think she's coming.
Or if we had a question for her.
Right, and she's coming to these meetings for a reason, I think.
Yep, so why don't we, like in preparation for our next meeting, we'll decide on an agenda item for the union rep.
Okay.
We can add it to the agenda for next month. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Alright. Um so moving on to the next agenda item is the bills, um so there were four different warrants that were sent, warrant fifty three, which I guess there were fifty three weeks last year, um as we learned last time, in the amount of twenty thousand eighty two dollars and thirty four cents. Um do I have a motion to accept that? Actually, or a motion to accept all four at once?
Oh, go ahead Chris, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept all four.
All second Chris's motion.
Alright. Uh motion made and seconded, any questions on any of the warrants? I think most of them, I mean a couple of them were big ticket items, um and one of them I believe was payment for the Kubla, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Um Tom, you might not know, I think that, I think warrant fifty three was a payment towards the Kubla repair.
Um.
Was it sixty?
Fifty three, I believe was and and number three, the third for the new fiscal year, um the reason that that is is significantly higher than normal is because it includes our CW Mars subscription.
The annual.
The subscriptions.
Yeah, the subscription, that, there was something else, it was a fairly large ticket.
Biblioteca.
The the ticket.
Biblioteca as well, right, that was the other one that was fairly large.
Yep.
Right.
Um but it was primarily, I mean, it was those two things.
Okay. And just for Chris's benefit, that's true with a lot of the beginning of the year, is a lot of those annual subscriptions. Okay, um alright, if there are no other questions, um all in favor?
I.
I opposed, I declare the motion carried. Um onward to ongoing business, the first one is grant updates. The MPLCP building program grant update, I'm not sure who who's agenda item that was, do we know?
Um I believe at the last meeting
Was that?
that Tom
Was that about the lead certification first to fill out?
uh Tom uh says is not aware of any updates, he mentions leads reimbursement, so Tom spoke about that the last time.
Okay.
Um and then we talked about some change order requests.
Okay, well, so some of those have made it onto new business, so we can defer that to a little bit later.
Okay.
Um so if there are no questions on the grant, I don't think there's really anything left with the grant, so right, except for that lead certification, like that we're gonna talk a little bit later.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
In agreement.
Uh children's room update, we're all anxiously awaiting the children's room update.
Aren't you?
Yes.
Lots of people are in town.
Yep, yep.
Um so um a couple of things to to let you know about. Um the children's programming room has reopened, so that's great, cause we're having programming in there, which is wonderful, we had the uh the sink, the water and all hooked up again, so we're good to go with that, so that, those are, that's already taken place.
Yes, excellent. Where did all of that stuff that was in that room end up going, just like into the corner or?
Into the, um I believe it ended up in the children's room primarily, yeah.
Storage room, okay.
Don't have the change room?
Yep.
Yeah.
We were able to put a number of things away in the closet now that those shelving units were installed, which is one of the holdups is that we couldn't
Awesome.
Yep.
put anything away because we had no shelving, so the shelving was installed, we were able to begin putting things away, um and we cleared that space so we could um resume programming.
Was the shelving damaged during the the flood?
Not in, nothing was, none of the shelving was damaged during the flood, um we have some that I'm sure Tom will speak of later. But but the, so the the closet shelving is is fine.
Yeah.
And then so access to the programming rooms through that outside door near the patio, and that's been, no issues at all so far?
Correct, so we're unlocking exterior. No, it's not ideal and it's far from bathroom, so when you have littles, it could be tricky, but it's in a pinch, it's
Uh, yeah.
it's nice to not have to close the community room so um children can still gather and play um when we do programming for elders.
Great.
Excellent.
Sounds great.
And the sandbags removed
Mm-hmm.
for safety issue.
Are they were?
Yeah. Um the um summer reading program is ongoing and in all departments actually, but um that's going wonderfully. Um the musical instruments have been installed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the the pathway leading back through the garden is now able to be musical, so that's that's nice. Um the, I guess we'll say the big news is that the installation of carpet in the children's room is scheduled to begin this Wednesday.
Wonderful, oh my goodness.
So
Oh my god.
we are moving forward.
Yep.
So um installation is scheduled for Wednesday, the thirty first, um after much, yes?
This is, so that means they've already moved everything out or they're doing that?
Mm uh, hold on, hold up, come on.
Okay, sorry, I'll let you finish.
Um That's okay, that's okay, um I know, you've been waiting for this, um after much deliberation and discernment, um we're ready to move forward with the installation, so um Evan and William have been working very closely with the carpet manufacturers. Um they resorted to the original schema, the architectural notes, um as well as photographs from when the carpet was originally installed, they actually went back to the original the the pictures that from when the library reopened, so they could actually see what the original plan was, the intent of the carpeting. Um so they were able to determine, um as I said, the pattern, um and they determined that they had the, they laid out appropriately settled, so they they, right now, there's there's a layout of sixteen squares of carpet of what the intent is supposed to be.
Excellent.
And that is for the benefit of the people who are coming to install, um they've been sent that ahead of time as well, so they can be brush up on on what this is supposed to be.
Did they got the Sarah okay?
And Sarah's gonna be there?
Well well, well, that's all, well, that's all.
Sorry.
Where was I?
Right.
Um so uh so that's all laid out, the installers, um new installers are going to be there um Wednesday at eight AM.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna be there at eight AM and William is going to be there soon thereafter. So we're gonna be on site to make sure that um that they know what's going on and how we need to move forward.
That's wonderful.
So um we are moving forward, the installers have indicated that the laying of the carpet um will will not take that long. That's what they said, so we'll see where that goes. Um so we're quite close to getting it getting it reopened. Um there is some some movement that needs to take place, so um the the way they're going to be doing the installation is is in halves. Okay, so there's there's a lot of stuff on one half and we're we're in the process of moving the rest of what's any area that's going to be installed first over to the other side where currently we have all the uh
So who is helping with that moving, cause the shelving is quite heavy and
Shelving is there already, the shelving is there on that side, um so it's primarily stools, chairs, um it's it's pretty light items, uh and Joe and Tom have been helping out as well as as children's room staff have been moving things to get them over. Um there's enough room there's enough room, right, to get everything from one side over to the other side.
We're hopeful.
Okay.
The timing of it with us mid-programming and using the programmer, which was a staging area for overflow
Right.
is not ideal, but we're very excited that there's progress, so we're, we are um looking into options of where we can place things so that we keep the the space open for programming.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
When the installation of the carpet has been, so we're gonna move to one side, do half
Mm-hmm.
move everything over, do the other half, we should be good to go.
So just good, so the shelving that's on, you know, the the far side
Yeah.
when they put the carpet down, that, does that stay and they carpet around it or do they, they
That's gonna be moved over into the side that that was done first.
It's gonna, does it move over and then? Okay.
Laying down the carpet and then, and then, as I understand it
Carefully. Carefully move it out.
Yeah.
You dividing the house.
Yeah, now, as I understand it, there's there, the town has hired a company to move
That was another question, cause I knew it was really heavy, right, okay.
the large things back. Right, so the the smaller items, we are feeling fairly comfortable moving ourselves. Um but the larger items, uh
Okay, that makes sense.
and uh there's, I think there's also some concern because last time when those things were moved, some were damaged.
They were damaged.
And so we wanna make sure that that those are not damaged again.
And or the carpet, obviously.
And or the carpet.
Yeah, I think when they were pulling like the ends of the shelf units broke, kinda broke off, cause they were like pulling on the ends.
Unone, right, right.
Yeah.
So how do you move?
And will William be, will William be there the whole time or someone from the town or?
He's not gonna be, well, I mean, we're we're not exactly sure how long it's going to take.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say, um I know that William is going to be off at some point
Yep.
uh in the next week or so.
Okay.
Um he has some some time off scheduled, so there there will be time when he's not there, but he's gonna leave my contact information with him. I will be there.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I'm I'm in house, so I'll be there. And Evan is is well briefed on on the whole process.
Mm-hmm. Great.
So um so after the installation, we'll, there'll be setup and cleaning that'll need to be done before we we get around to doing a reopening, so.
So for the um the company, I'm sorry, the the company that's doing the moving, is that something that we need to to pay out of pocket for or is the insurance company covering?
I believe that is insurance company.
Sure, okay.
I believe all of that's insurance.
That's been, that's been arranged um by Evan and William.
Okay, good. Okay, good, because last time they didn't do that, which was part of the problem, right, so, okay.
And so Yeah, yeah.
So do we have like, so Wednesday's when they're gonna start, do we have any kind of guesstimate on when they'll finish? I mean, is it a week or is it two weeks?
Um so the the, I think the quote from the installer was, we can do this in a number of days.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like the laying of the carpet would be about a week.
Yeah, okay. So you figure, figure two weeks, so they should be done and out of there, hopefully?
That's true.
I would, I would think so, I would think so.
Okay.
The reason why I asked about moving is, I was just thinking that hopefully they'll use a different method to move them, the way it was done
Yeah.
before, I mean, I don't, you know, pushing doesn't seem to be the way to do it.
So the
Well, I have no idea.
the um where the damage occurred was, there's there's a shelving unit and at the end, there's a a dislay unit, right, facing out, and it it seems like
Yeah, yeah.
it seems like they were just trying to move it by pulling it.
Right, and it was that other carpet installer, so it wasn't this professional moving carpet, so it was
And it came off.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Right.
They'll probably, yeah.
I would hope they're well versed on the issues that we had, that they're not gonna, they're gonna be really careful not to know.
We would hope they know. Cause it's very heavy. I didn't know if they
They're very heavy, um they're very heavy.
I know, I didn't know if they put something underneath it and that would like adopt a huge dollar or who knows?
Yeah. I would, I mean, we're bringing a professional company to to do the moving.
They were gonna do a good job.
They should do it.
I think the, I, I mean, I wasn't there, so I I I can't say exactly, but I believe the the part of the issue last time was that the carpet installers were doing the moving.
Yes.
And that's not their purview.
Their, yeah.
Yep.
Right, so they, it was really out of their scope to be doing that.
Okay. Okay.
They knew how to install carpet.
Know they did it.
I know, I do know, we're trying to get one people at it.
You don't have to.
Their intent was to install carpet and they were there with that knowledge, whether they were able to do it sufficiently or not.
Okay.
There you go, but they were certainly weren't there to move furniture.
Yeah.
Yep, so two weeks, let's just say it's two weeks, maybe it's three.
Let's just say it's two weeks.
I, let's, yeah.
Two weeks, and then um
Do we have to give it a
Yeah, you know, I mean
And then how long do you, do you think it's gonna take the children's room staff to get from that point to when we get open?
Um that I'm not quite sure about, one thing that has come up is that when we reopen, we would like to make this a big reopen.
No, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, okay.
Because um because we we literally, I mean, we have our our staff, our our patron comments and whenever I look at that, multiple times every day, a comment is on there some, in some form of when is the children's room reopening?
Yep.
Um and people have been wonderfully patient, including the staff, who have had to end these or field these questions every single day, multiple times.
Absolutely.
But we are all in in favor of not having those questions anymore, and I think that we we need something to uh to have a a an appropriate celebration of of getting our room back.
So do we think that that's a week after, uh I'm sorry, will it be ready to open a week after that they're done or two weeks after?
So
Because when they move everything, presumably the materials where should be go belong, so there shouldn't be a lot of work to remove, move things around, just kinda tidy things up.
As it was explained to me, when they're doing the moving, they take them off in order, they move the shelving units, they put them back on in order.
Right. Right. I mean, I'm just trying to get an estimate of when we think we can open and then secondly, when we would plan this event.
Right. So, I mean, I haven't discussed it with the head of the children's room officially as of yet. But um I don't know whether we need, I don't know whether we need to wait for the grand opening in to open the room, and in fact, I might suggest having the room open again before we have the big shindig, because there are gonna be some bumps, you know, there's gonna be some like, ooh, we forgot to bring back whatever
Oh sure.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
all the DVDs are out of order, or you know, some, something somewhere just might get slipped, and so I would rather discover that in a
Yeah.
in a uh a run up to the grand opening.
Yeah.
And I'm perfectly fine with having the patrons in and welcome them back
And then that's a miracle, that this wonderful event is coming too, so it will help spread the word and maybe increase its
and still have Right, right, right. Right.
Yeah, obviously, school is starting about that same time, so
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
maybe there, you do it a week or two after school starts and that would be it.
I would think that would be reasonable.
I think so.
Cause our next, so one of the reasons I'm asking is if we have to, if the board has to approve any expenditures, our next meeting is the twenty eighth.
Right.
And if it's before the twenty eighth, we're not gonna have a meeting to vote that, so if we don't think it's gonna be before the twenty eighth, we can talk about that on the twenty eighth.
Right.
Well, we might
I mean, you guys can plan in advance, but we won't be able to vote anything.
Yeah.
Yep.
They might wanna think about it, cause it might make sense to have it after, when school starts, and then you know everybody's back in town.
Yep.
So that, that's something Sarah's gonna wanna think about.
So the kids
So what, Labor Day is what, is that the second?
So the kids, Grafton Public Schools start back on Tuesday, August twenty seventh, and then Labor Day is on September third.
Very second, second, on second.
It's Monday, uh, it's actually, Monday, September second.
But if we, if you did the grand reopening, whatever, whether it's that first or second week of September, that's gonna be after our next meeting, so, okay?
I I, reasonably, I think that would probably be the timeframe we'd be looking at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um
Work for you? Yeah.
Will you guys need any support, the trust, any help, the trustees before that?
Funding, right?
I mean, some, besides the funding, I mean, if you guys wanna
Money?
No, all we need is funding, give us funding, we're good.
Yeah. Yes, okay.
We, we'll let you know.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. So um I I think for the for the next meeting, I think we would, we would think about what is um reasonable to be planned, but I think tonight, if we could have some idea of you know, are we talking big jumpy houses on the commons or are we talking um
I would wanna do something in the library, personally, like a
Well, I mean, but you know, the tie-in of the town and the library.
Well Well, the common is, the front yard is the common of the library.
Yeah.
We do know that.
That's such a great idea.
So maybe do it right there, if you want jumpy houses.
And that would be
You mean in the, in the s- uh semi circle in front of the library?
Yeah, or right in front of there, isn't there a grassy area it used to be?
Right.
There is.
Yeah.
There's some, yeah, that's that's the common, but it's
Yeah.
But I think if the, I mean, the common is right across the street, like the Bunsen Castles, like if they, they're looking for like a restroom, they're gonna come to the library anyways, like it's
Right.
I think it'd be exciting for
But it's gonna be a lot of, it's gonna be a lot more to be able to book the common though, that's what I'm saying, if we did it right in front of the library
Yeah.
It's You could do both, but I think
It's their own property.
Yeah.
To me, it's exciting to like the libraries.
Well, it's technically the common, but they never, they never use it for common and stuff.
Oh, it is, actually, right, it actually isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can.
Yeah, actually, actually, we don't have our own property too.
What about
Even in the parking lots, never really has technically.
What about, is it Mr. Kim, Mr. Kim, right, what about having somebody
Is it
Sara, Sara had brought up a bunch of ideas, the the jumpy houses were her idea, so so you know.
Yep.
Um uh and uh this musician, is that Mr. Kim?
Mr. Kim is quite popular, he has retired, so he no longer does our monthly visits, but he is a local superstar. I don't know if we can entice him to do another concert. He gets big numbers, we got about three hundred, three fifty when he would do a concert on the common, so we would need to look into renting the common proper if we were gonna look into having him, just so we could fit everyone who wanted to be able to attend comfortably.
Oh wow, okay.
So it's like available to the common plus his availability, like those are the two key.
What, what about the little children's amp, I mean, you couldn't get three hundred people in there, but could you get enough people in that amphitheater area? That'd be kinda cool.
It's Not three hundred, you think they're three hundred?
Not
No, any of that, but
I think we could do like a balloon twister or face paint, we could strategically place events
Yeah.
so it it encouraged people to kind of visit the various locations, yeah, so, oh, you might not have come out here
Explore.
That would be great, yeah.
Right.
here, look at our new musical garden.
Right.
Get a balloon, then you can go to the common, I I think if the event is big enough that it draws people in
Then huh.
And
It's like a whole
it will then in turn bring people to the library.
And is it open to anybody, you don't have to be a kid, have you thought about that, like parents?
Well, no, just because people have been wondering, what are you talking about, all over town, cause community room's been closed too, okay?
You can come.
People Pe- people Yeah, they they, I, we should, I would love to do something big so people can't help but miss that we're we're back.
Right.
We're thankful with how patient they've been, the the flood was on on August eighteenth. This has been a long time for the original timeframe of three weeks to be closed. We owe the community something, um I think if we made it an event, it would, that could benefit, you know, have, if we could get food, if we could get, make it a big thing
Yeah, food trucks would be great.
um I think the Um I think the community would appreciate that.
Yeah, I just personally think, I mean, I think that'd be all great, but that's a that's a lot of of that planning that would be needed.
That's a lot of that planning.
Yes.
Um and I certainly wanna make sure that people are going into the community room, into the children's room, like if if we can focus in there. But I recognize that if Mister come Mister Kim is doing three hundred people, that's not gonna fit anywhere in the library space.
'Cause.
And that's pending his willingness.
Sure, sure, okay.
I don't I don't confirm.
You you said you were.
We need some time, need some time, I'll drop you.
Well.
I know.
Oh.
And then so then the key question is funding, is that something that this board would be willing to fund and where would it come from?
Well, we definitely have to fund it.
I think we need to fund it, because I think we need some kind of celebration and a thank you to the community for being so gracious while we had, we waited to it's taken a long time to get everything remediated, no one's done anything wrong, it's just the way it was.
Yep. So then the question is what funding source and how much?
We'll be.
Like ballpark, I mean, we don't have to vote on it until next week, but I think Tom, Tom has like an idea of the what is.
Okay, all right, well, think about it. Well, I think um I don't know, I think you're talking some big bucks, right?
Yeah.
Do you, you don't have food too, right?
I think we should have food.
Okay.
Well, if you have food, um you know, are so so it is a free public library, so it has the free food, right?
That's good. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
I don't know that you can have unlimited food, right, for everyone in the community, I mean, you have to con- consider that, right?
Oh. And I think ten thousand, what do you think?
Well, well, I mean, you have to have like an hour, like a food truck is there for an hour.
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know if the what it's gonna be, but.
And serves that many people or until they're out, right?
Hmm.
So like.
But we could have a food truck come and people pay for it.
They could pay for that, I thought we could have dessert or something.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, that's.
Right.
But you can also get the food truck, like at the um at the high school for the bon voyage party,
Yeah.
they had the chicken um truck and then they just paid, you know, they paid in you a set fee, so I guess it would depend on how much it would cost, but.
Right.
We'd have to look at that, maybe we could have the food trucks there and then we could have like something smaller, like popsicles or so- something legal that everyone gets that.
Yeah, maybe some.
Yeah, so it could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Popsicles cake, something, cookies, something.
Yeah, something like that.
Yep.
Something that ties into the library, it'd be great if we do have cookies making the shape of the library.
Cupcakes, yeah.
So what are what are funding sources that are available other than Stede?
I think we could do that.
I think that's it.
Um, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Or you reach out to the Capitol campaign.
Right.
Right, but that's, it's not really in there per view.
We have Stede, don't we, this is pretty important.
Yeah, I think we, I think we have enough money to help her, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I think we should just come up with a ballpark figure, I don't know if Tom has one, no, we're gonna
I don't, I think.
Could be, it could be fifteen hundred, could be two thousand, don't you think?
I think.
Two thousand dollars? I think it's gonna be more than that.
I think it's like five, it's gonna be five grand, right, like five, like.
Yeah, that's a good.
Okay.
'Cause like.
The bouncy house could be a grand, I don't know what those things are.
I think. There, it could be expensive.
Yeah, it could be five, should we give them a range? 'Cause she's gotta deal with it, Sarah's gotta deal with the research.
We have to do research.
Yeah.
So we don't, she doesn't really know yet.
So just to give you an idea, so we did uh the ninety uh ninetieth um celebration on the common and I think we approved twenty five hundred dollars, so we had a giant um obstacle course. We had like a si- si- yeah, we had like a snow cone machine, um Lucky showed up with a bunch of pizzas and stuff.
I remember that.
So twenty five hundred gets you quite a bit in twenty eighteen dollars or twenty seventeen dollars, I don't know how much that gets you in twenty twenty four dollars.
Yeah, maybe Maybe ten, five to ten thousand.
So it's probably gonna be at least five thousand, you know, to what we're talking about, at least.
So, yeah.
So do we just wanna float that number out, say something around five thousand?
I'd say about to six.
I'd say five, I, yeah, I, can we give a range?
'Cause like the food trucks, even if you, even if the food trucks are charging people, sometimes you have to pay a fee for them to just show up, right?
I mean. Right.
So that and the music, I don't know how much performers cost, but I imagine.
Oh, that would. He was not yet expensive.
Yeah, and then the bouncy house and I don't know, maybe
Yeah.
Stokoe rental or whatever other thing, you know.
Are you gonna have things? What is geared to older kids?
Ideally, yeah, so this is very.
So she's just starting, so maybe, can we give a range?
Yeah.
And we're not wedged in anything, I mean, so we mentioned bouncy houses, but you know, if we decide that the better way to use our funds would be
I don't think she's gonna.
Yeah.
That's just an idea.
Yeah.
somewhere else, then. I I lo- I like that idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep, so you guys can decide, you know, what you think is best for the community and you just need a dollar or not. Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Some maybe.
You know, if we just, if we if we discover that, you know, the food truck is gonna take up two thousand dollars of our budget, then you know, and we say, okay, popsicle sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
You know, and so we can, we can, as long as we have some ballpark, I think we could work to
Right.
figure out where where to best use that money.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to vote on anything as a board, but maybe give a ballpark of five to six thousand.
No, I think we'd be five to ten thousand.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I'd say five to ten thousand.
But that range and then come back and tell us like, you know, what what do you propose and then, you know.
Yeah.
I I would say.
That also sounds like a lot to me.
I know, but I'll probably be, yeah.
Oh.
I mean, I think it would be.
Well, five to eight.
That range, you know.
Well, I don't think you, I don't think you can actually have a food truck and feed people with a food truck, I think they have to buy it.
I would.
I'd I would agree, I mean.
And and then we can do other stuff, I mean, 'cause bringing the me- the instrument, the musician and other things, like the bouncy house or whatever it might be, you might come up with something great, maybe it's a storyteller that older people will wanna listen to, who knows?
I'd say maybe up to six thousand and that would be pretty much what we could kinda like, again, we don't have to vote, but guarantee, but then anything beyond that, we could entertain, but it would have to probably be like a really good
Hmm.
reason for something like that.
Yeah, that's my, I I would actually like to approve up to six thousand, you know, um and then if we decide that six thousand is enough for what the library would wanna do, then you can always come back. I would be willing to approve that, at least to give you a budget to work from. Also, I mean, this thank you. First, let's start there. But the other thing is, I mean, I'll be keeping you up up to date on on the progress of what we're finding, right? Because I'm not gonna come back two days before
Yeah.
we're supposed to have this event and say, oh, we booked a musician in the bouncy house and it's gonna be twelve thousand dollars, you approve, right? So I'm I'm not, I'm not gonna blindside on you in that way. So so I'd say be in touch with Doug Yeah, yeah, so. in case, you know, um that budget is not real- realistic. You know, if we Anything's a good place to start. Right, and I think I think what we've established tonight, it's great, I mean, that's a great first step, I mean, you know what the first step is? We're getting the tiles, like, you know, and so we'll start there.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna do.
And so you know, building from that, we wanna celebrate.
Yep.
And so I think that I think the town deserves it and I think the staff deserves it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think so.
So um.
We all, we agree with you on both those, right?
Okay, and then, you know, we'll keep you up to date on what we're finding and whether anything is greatly
Yeah, yeah.
As a board.
Okay.
divergent from what we were expecting in either direction.
Yeah.
If we find that, you know, hey, we need a food truck for five hundred bucks, I'll let you know that as well.
Yep. So you wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve up to six thousand dollars for the purpose of a grand opening of the children's room.
From Stede.
From Stede.
Second.
Uh motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Alright, next one, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
I would just say it's also the
Oh, let's declare the motion carried, sorry.
Also, the opening of the community room in effect, right, is the thing was.
It is, it's some two rooms that were.
Yes.
And that's a dig into everybody.
Yep. So if it, it, I mean, that's a really good point, because it'll, it means that we can start having more adult program as well.
Great.
That's what we should say.
Yeah, so that budget's shrinking now. If they have to. Yeah, I know, I know. If you're already setting certain thoughts too.
I know, that's what, it should be, I think, 'cause the community room, a lot of people, we've gotten lots of
Yeah.
people are, the, I mean, the rest of the library has, we have a lot of rooms that people really like the community room.
Yeah.
I've heard two or three people say, oh, we had a meeting there, it was great.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna be there, but I can't.
I mean, I will, I will say that the questions we get on a daily basis, children's room, children's room, children's room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I haven't had anybody come up to me and say, so when are you gonna have a, you know, a an adult program, right?
Yep.
So.
Well, I think in your planning, though, you should also pick a, try to pick a date.
I'll keep.
Right.
At least a proposed date, so that we can start thinking about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, great. Anything else on the children's update, I mean, thank you for
Yeah.
exciting news, I mean, we wish it was never needed, but right, wish it never happened, I should say, but.
Yeah. A month from now, we'll be looking back and wondering why we were so upset.
Yeah, great. Alright, um next on the agenda is the FY twenty four budget update, so that would.
Oh, do we, do we do a construction?
Construction update?
Do we have anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, construction updates, thank you. I don't think so, I mean, that was mostly the children's room stuff, so um I have no updates for that.
Do we wanna, do you wanna include it on the agenda for next one?
Do we get it?
No, I'll take, I'll take that off the agenda.
Okay.
Unless something changes between now and then. Um okay, so FY twenty four budget update, so that's the previous years that we just finished. So if you give us a quick update on how that turned out.
Is it mine too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're you're usually most of this meeting, Tom.
Um. Wow. Um gee, I'm honored. Um the end of fiscal year twenty four was a challenge and um we we discussed that a little bit in the last meeting, 'cause we were kind of knee deep in it at that point. Um it it got a little bit more challenging after that as well, because uh we discovered that there were, there had been some uh miscalculations in the percentages that were being used for our um our our expected goals to meet MBLC um financing. So the percentages that um we need to meet for uh MBLC um certification, it had been assumed previously that the um the percentage that we had to have hit was thirteen percent. Uh we then discovered that it was actually fifteen percent.
Is that because of the hours change?
It wasn't actually. Um so the hours, we've actually always been fine on, so there are two elements that are used to determine what the percentage is going to be and when is the number of hours uh that that the library's open. And um we needed to be open uh fifty hours and we always were, we, I mean, as I thought it was here, right? Um the the s- the library was open, uh even during the shortened hours was still fifty half, fifty hours a week. We're currently, and what most of the year has been, was fifty eight hours a week, so we were fine there. Um it's actually the size of the town. Um so the the lar- the larger the size, the population basically, the larger the population, the smaller the percentage you are required to spend on materials. So the s- the um, yeah, I know. You have a question?
We're we're losing growing, so.
Well, um so, okay, so just just to reference, um when I was in Springfield, city of a hundred and fifty thousand, we only had to meet twelve percent. Okay. Um for here, for a a a a town between fifteen and twenty, it's fifteen percent. Actually, the the smaller the town, it would actually be a larger percentage.
Hmm, sure.
And I believe this is because the assumption is that the larger the area, I'm Springfield, sorry to say, has a larger budget. So twelve percent of that larger budget is just about what our entire budget is for here, right? So the, I think the assumption is that the larger the budget for the larger the town, um you don't have to get quite as much towards, right?
Yeah, there's some common, common is a scale.
There's only so many children's DVDs you can buy at a time, right? We are required to spend fifteen percent of our budget. And so uh come June, when uh when we were discussing this last, when I just, when I arrived, um we were uh in a a a bit of a scramble to spend the rest of the money, because we were not.
You're shooting for thirteen or fifteen, right?
We weren't, we weren't quite where we needed to be for thirteen percent. And then discovering that it was fifteen percent really set us back. Um so.
Did you, and then you reach out to the MBLC and?
Yeah, I had a, I had a number of of uh MBLC and CW Mars, I wanna say were fantastic, as were my selectors, uh people who were were getting the orders in, so we can get materials.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Um MBLC took the time to to really lay things out and gave me some great ideas as to some things that we weren't considering beforehand. Because there were some areas that we weren't counting towards in previous years, that we weren't counting towards the amount, the percentage of our spending, so for instance, um we're spending about thirty five hundred dollars on museum passes. Well, we're not, it's not coming from our budget, it's coming from the friends, but it's still being spent on materials that are being used by the library patrons.
You have to give them the friends to offer.
So that counts, even though that it it hadn't been considered in the past. Um as well, there's a percentage of the CW Mars uh that the this the sixty thousand in the in the warrant that we saw earlier, we spend about twenty two thousand dollars a year for our subscription to CW Mars. One of the elements that we can use towards our percentage for MBLC is a percentage of that. So it works out to be about forty five hundred dollars, so that that helped us, that I mean, that that bumped us up a fair amount. Um so part of the, part of the frustration with this is that it's hard to know exactly where you are, because you have things in so many different stages. So you have people who are creating orders and then we're placing the orders and then we're not exactly sure whether whether, so if we say, oh, we just, you know, we just bought fifteen hundred dollars of DVDs, but when it comes in, oh, well, you know, a dozen of them were backordered, so we may not, we may not exactly be spending fifteen hundred dollars. So it's hard to know exactly what we've encumbered and what we've spent, um but uh it 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 looks like we are fairly good. And so um MBLC has three, well, there's there are three different ranges. One is you meet your your goal, a hundred percent, uh which is, which is what you want. The other is that you meet your goal ninety percent, which means that you're still a certified library, but you receive a little bit less funding. Which is not what you want, but it's better than the third option, which is you you are under ninety percent and you don't, you're not a certified library and you don't receive any funding from them. I know we met the ninety percent, I know we met that. And if we didn't meet a hundred percent, we're really close. So I'm fairly confident that we're gonna be good. I wish I could give you a more certain answer to that, but it, there's just too many uncertainties in the moving parts.
And, yeah, it sounds like you're doing the right, I mean, it's great that you're in communication with the MBLC and CW Mars, so so at least they realize that you're working on it
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
and it's a little bit of an unusual situation, um given the last six months.
They Yeah, so I'll just say that MBLC knew who I was when I called, when I said I was from Grafton Library, they they knew, they knew.
Yeah.
So they are not unaware, they are not unsympathetic and they're they're definitely wanting to work with us.
Great.
So now, um so if I, and I may continue, just something else to tell you about though.
Okay. Of course.
Yes.
So um so that's twenty four budget, I think we're good. We do need to address twenty five budget though, because when the budget was proposed and and accepted, the amount that was used figuring what we would need for materials was still using a thirteen percent. So when the budget was put together in January or whenever that was and voted on in April or May or whenever that was, it was with the assumption that we still had to meet that hundred and thirty five thousand or something that it was. It's not that number, it's not that number. So the amount that was allotted for the twenty five budget is less than what we're going to need.
So how much are we short?
We are short about thirty thousand dollars. So I've been in contact with um with the finance department here to at in for town
So.
Mm-hmm.
and I've had discussions with uh both William and uh Marriott Luria and um they are completely aware of our situation and um willing to work with us and and are confident that there are areas that are are gonna be underspent, that are going to be able to be used for this. So um you know, it's 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 this no- it's this notion of are we willing to spend an extra twenty to make sure that we get
Yeah.
a lot more than twenty, right?
Yeah, of course.
You know, so it is, it 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 will end up being an output of additional funds from an area, and I understand that this is a little vague, but it's sort of what we're dealing with. Um in order to, excuse me, to ensure that um we're gonna hit that fifteen percent.
So is there any, I guess, like, there were some things that were reconsidered in FY twenty four spending
Yeah.
that we said, oh, we didn't realize that this would count towards the spending.
Yep.
Is there anything that's a possibility in our FY twenty five budget that we didn't count towards the thirteen percent, but reconsidering the guidelines that might get us a portion of that as well?
Um so the there there, I mean, I, so as I've been figuring out like where we are exactly,
Mm-hmm.
I've been building in the things that we hadn't considered before.
Mm-hmm.
So and it keeps bringing that number down, so we're we're good. Um one of the elements that uh periodicals, which is an enormous amount for us, I think it's about nine thousand dollars, um isn't, wasn't actually considered in the materials line item. So when we add that in, you know, brings us down again.
Okay.
Um you know, we're still, we're still gonna have to add additional funds in, but it's not nearly as dramatic
Yeah.
uh as dire, honestly, as as it initially seemed. Um and it's it's a good thing we caught it, you know, I mean, catch it in July, we're good, you know, well, we're okay, um.
Yeah.
It is, it's a good thing we caught it.
We caught it, we caught it too, yeah.
And it's not a case where you can take monies from another piece of the budget and just move it over to media, like, let's say, let's just say maintenance repair.
Right, right, so we've looked, we've looked at a couple of of things like that.
Yeah.
A a good portion of our budget comes, not surprisingly, in uh in um salaries.
Right, yeah.
Right? You know, that is, that is the majority of the budget, you know.
That's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um and so um. Um and so um you know, there's that, and then there's the the materials budget. Um so there are other areas, there are other lines in the budget that that um you know, looking at from this year, we didn't spend as much. And so are we confident that next year there'll be something like that, even if it's not the exact same one? I think so, I think so.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you certainly glad we're glad that you caught it, can you, is there anything, like, if there's a some help you, you know, second look or something that you need from the trustees, let us know, I I know at least in the past.
Yeah.
Preparing the budget, like, at the beginning of the year, we typically would have one or two trustees help out the director.
Right. That that'd be great.
Okay.
Um so we have a spreadsheet that we're working on, and when I say we, I'm talking about in the administrative office. Um so Eileen and like uh is is fantastic, um and keeping track of of exactly where everything's being spent from.
嗯哼, okay.
So uh I have a a spreadsheet that I would gladly share because another set of eyes on it would um you know,
Yeah, so I would propose is if someone's willing to help out, let Tom know.
would would help certainly.
Whatever, Tom.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Great, thanks, Chris.
I had another question, so do we have any risks for prior year, so?
Okay. I spoke to M B L C.
Okay.
Uh they know exactly where we are, they know exactly where we've been. Uh they know what our situation is and that we were not using the correct amount this year.
Okay.
There was no mention of any auditing of previous years.
Yeah, and they'll they'll let you know if they're going to do that, so, okay. Yep, okay, I think we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we are too.
Any other questions for Tom on F Y twenty four budget?
Yeah, just a quick one, you said, I think you said that the twenty four budget was, the thirteen percent was around a hundred thirty five thousand.
Right, right.
What's the exact or rough figure for the the twenty five, is it a hundred sixty five thousand or?
No, so the the twenty four one, the fifteen percent was actually a hundred and sixty six thousand that we need to be at.
Right.
And so the um the twenty five one is about a hundred and seventy.
Okay.
A little over a hundred and seventy.
Alright. Thanks.
Alright, um uh moving on, um Friends update, was there a Friends meeting, Carrie?
There was a Friends meeting, and thank you, Tom and Chris, for attending the
Yeah.
that you guys know that the Friends really appreciate that very much. So um the Friends um have the back to school used book sale scheduled. Um and it is uh scheduled to be at our library on Saturday, August twenty fourth, from ten AM to three PM. And on Sunday, August twenty fifth, from noon to two PM. Um in advance of the actual book sale, um the Friends are accepting donations at our library uh between August twelfth and August twenty third. Um the post about the event went on the Friends um Facebook page uh uh today, and I know there's some flyers which like hopefully are making their way around the library, okay, so they need to be shared, I guess, um so, okay.
I think I've seen those.
Yeah, they're good, they they look like this.
I think I've seen that, yeah.
Okay, great.
And where's that where's that taking place?
Where they're taking place.
So um so the the library staff, um you kindly um guarantee that the Friends could have the um the back to school book sale regardless of the status of the carpet installation in the conference room A and B. It looks like that timing might work out, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, community.
The community room. Community room, by how many, like, com-
Yep, community room.
But it's called conference room A, isn't it, though?
Community, yeah.
Community room A, sorry, community room A and B.
Yeah. 嗯哼
So it will be at um at the at the library.
Great.
Which is wonderful, um you know, the Friends, as we've discussed before, you know, um very graciously um you allow the children's room to use the Friends corner um for um for materials, for for borrowing where they normally would have um the ongoing used book sale. So this is this is the only um book event, used book sale event this year, typically there would have been two. Um so we so they're gonna, you know, have have this one. Um they also um talked about doing um the caddy stacks as well, um so, uh but that um yeah, don't have any dates on that yet, but.
And if we're lucky, the um children's room might be gone by then.
The if they it might, the the community room might, right, if the stars all align, it might work out.
Out of the community. Might be crazy.
Now, they're starting to accept donations on August twelfth, so I guess that's a a question about.
We've sent donations already.
Yeah.
At the front door.
At the front door, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, not officially.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that people are gearing up to donate already.
And when's when's the the um date that stops the donations?
The donations go up to August twenty third, so that's the Friday right before, so August twelfth through the twenty third.
Thank you.
So that Friday before is gonna be like a big day to, you know, get prepped for the for the sale, so I know I'm gonna be helping out that day.
Great.
So um, yeah, so.
And when do we do we have a date for the next Friends?
So tomorrow um is a tomorrow night, there is a planning meeting for the Friends and I believe that's it's either at five or five thirty, let me double check. Um but then the Friends board meeting is on next week on Tuesday, August sixth. And the back to school planning is at five PM at the library.
Great.
I don't know if they reserved it yet, but.
I don't know. We we probably haven't. I'd also like to say that the for the for the Friends, getting the children's room reopened affects them as well.
嗯 Absolutely, yeah.
Because they've they graciously gave up their uh their their grotto, their child their their Friends grotto.
嗯哼，the corner, Friends corner.
Um so they will be getting that back.
We should, mm-hmm.
So.
Do they have any plans uh for the getting getting the corner back, like any, I know there have been some things.
Well, for so for the Friends corner, I mean, the we have this, the shelving is in there, there's plenty of books, so um so really after the um book sale um commences, there's always leftover materials, but you know, the Friends, you kind of go through and pick, you know, like, you know, the material they want to keep. So they'll, you know, just be re, you know, stocking the shelves, you know, assuming that they're available. Um and then there is that space um that has been kind of designated for a vending machine. Um so um so that was definitely discussed at the last meeting and um it would be a matter of reaching out again to the different providers because it had to go on hold until, you know, that we were settled as far as what was going on with um the with the community room and the uh the children's room.
Cool.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thanks as always for giving us that update.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for Carrie on the Friends? Great. Alright, next is the uh staff update, uh one of which is the administrative assistant, which we are, as a board, anxiously waiting to have a scribe help us out.
Yes. See this, I have a I have, we're hot off the press, I have I have somewhat of an update.
Yeah.
So um we have been in the interviewing process uh and and going through that, um which uh has has been going well. Um when I say we, I I mean William, Blake and myself. Um we uh will be extending and offer a letter to one of the candidates.
Excellent.
So.
That's great.
Um we are we are starting that process, so it's it's very early in that process. I mean, this is this is this is a recent development, and so I can't really say much more than that other than that um this looks very promising. Um and we do have a a a verbal commitment that that the person's going to accept the position.
Oh, that's wonderful, wow.
That's great.
So So um as soon as we get that, we can we can move forward getting the person and we're working on it.
And And refresh the myself and the board, that's a union position.
It is, yeah.
It is, yeah, every position is union except except for Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except for Tom, yeah. Yeah.
Great.
The only one left out, so. So um
That's great news.
Uh it it really is great news, really is good news, 'cause uh this staff has picked up a lot of slack
Yeah, it'll help everybody.
Yeah.
because of it. And uh
In you, especially.
and so uh this will this will alleviate a lot of, a lot, so.
Mm-hmm, alright.
So very excited about that. Um I do have one other thing to uh just to report is that that I have had one uh staff member um hand in a letter of resignation recently.
Okay.
Um
Was that?
Um
You don't understand.
I'm I'm not gonna, I don't wanna go in too much into it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I think only the board is really privy to, like, the director's resignation, right? Um that's the only time we really ask for that, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause they, um this person's not a uh doesn't report to the board.
That's correct, yeah. So um I'm I'm I just wanted to report it tonight because it does mean that we will need to be in the process of trying to fill that position, 'cause
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, sorry to hear that. Yeah, yeah, so um it it's 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 an unfortunate move on moving on, but the staff member has decided to move on to other pursuits.
Okay, good.
So I respect that, and we will we will move to um to fill the vacancy. One area that I am a little unclear about is that um the position as it stands right now, I would like to re-designate it because it's currently a um library assistant.
Associate.
Associate, thank you, sorry about that. Um and uh I would, when we get a new person in, I I would like it to be moved up to a librarian position. So we do have both of those positions existing in our purview.
嗯哼
Um and um uh I think I would rather have somebody in in that position.
It is that because of the responsibilities we're needed to fill in, of course, yeah.
Disco and what they're disco, right, right.
Yeah, disco.
So I mean, in order to find somebody who will take on the workload that this person who's leaving was doing, it's not the uh library associate position.
Yeah.
The workload is the librarian position.
嗯哼
And so that's what they should be designated as.
So would that result in a different um pay scale?
Yeah.
It would be a different, it would be a t- a title and a different grade, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd have to adjust the budget a little bit to?
Um you know, I I I mentioned this to William, we discussed this, and he seemed fine with this. Um he's on board with this, uh uh when the talk of this had come up before Evan was as well. So um the the difference in the budget, I don't know if would would be so significant that we would need to restructure. I think that we could definitely um uh adjust, yeah.
嗯哼，嗯哼. So is this a your urging or kind of feedback that you had from from the staff? Um 'cause I know it's, you know, you've been here like a month and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know, I I like to see kind of your your works, and it's like your first official act is to kind of do some restructuring
Okay.
or just kind of wanna know what the genesis of that was.
Sure, this was uh this was inspired um through conversation
Yeah.
with uh with staff who work very closely with the um with the person who's currently in the position.
Yeah.
And uh so it it was brought to my attention, the two different positions, uh the one that the person is at right now, and uh also to look at the uh the librarian position. Um and uh it it was clear to me that the work that is being expected um is is the librarian position.
嗯哼
Um so in order to uh in order to find somebody who's going to assume the responsibilities that we would need this person to be taking on, um they would they would fall into the job description of librarian.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good, great. Any other questions for Tom on the staffing? Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Um I think you get a little bit of break for a few minutes. Um next is the walkabout, like Chris, did you get a chance to do it this month?
Yeah. Did, John and I did it again uh last week, or I guess week and a half ago, something like that.
Yeah.
Um and nothing too much new to report outside of the air conditioner's going down, but I see that's already on here and I think part of your response to the emails last week was to mention that, so they don't know that anyone's gonna be totally surprised at that. Um but we were able to see the musical instruments being installed. Um there were kind of some of the similar kind of consistent issues that we'd seen, you know, with um water damage and and things of that sort. Um there was two pieces on the front of the old original library. Some of the stone masonry on the side of the steps looked a little worse maybe than what we had seen a couple months ago. Um nothing overly critical, but it did seem like there was some there, and then there was either bees or wasps, we thought, in the light. Like the one that's like way high up, like the old front door, that might have been there.
Yeah. Okay.
Um and that was kind of exciting, I have some pictures here which I'd like you to pass around. Am I missing anything else?
Uh the only the only thing I also had written down was just that the the doors are still
Yes, yep.
last we checked, the doors are still not functioning properly.
The front door, the main, the main doors.
The main doors, so they have to, uh and I didn't realize this, or maybe this was a new thing when I saw it, I don't know, maybe a month ago now, they actually have to remove the, there's like, so there's the double doors and there's a big bar that just is a separator. And so they have to literally remove that entire bar so that the doors can be opened, 'cause they're right now, they're stuck locked, I think. So they so they take that entire bar off, and then when they close up, they put it back.
Great.
And then they also, I think they still chain the door
嗯哼
because then the doors could unlock
Right.
at any time, apparently, so.
Which door is this?
The main entrance.
The main entrance, at the parking lot, yeah.
The main entrance.
Parking lot, yeah.
Sounds like a big question.
So, um do we have any update on what's going on with that?
Wow.
Is that, I don't know if that's a new director's report or not.
Yeah, yeah.
I I would like to, oh, sorry.
Uh do you can you, can you back that again?
Sorry, I'll back up a minute.
'Cause I was thinking you were thinking, I thought for, I thought you were talking about the um door that goes to the um comment.
Oh, these are the double doors of the parking lot.
This is the main door.
Well, they thought the the horn is that's the front of the, yeah, store.
I know. I know, I know, but I mean, the problem with the doors, this is very important.
Yeah, so.
Let's let's talk about the doors first.
Yeah, but before we dive into the specifics, I'd like to talk about something very general.
I'm very concerned about that.
I think this would kind of help the discussion, right?
嗯哼
So Tom has a a verbal acceptance for administrative assistant, and I don't wanna put this on Tom's plate. Um the the goal of the walkabout is to kind of identify issues with with um you know, the building, right?
Right.
And I think from that, we should start to create a a punch list and a priority list, right? Um it's not our purview to go out and like um go get contractors to go do this work.
Right.
Um but I think the door is like number one, right? Uh anything that that uh is gonna be a hazard to patrons is gonna be up there too. So like if we're talking about wasps and a light, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So I think what I would like to see is um you know, that that priority punch list as we collect these, is you collect the photos and we have these walkabouts, but you know, we look at the same crumbling steps every week, is that
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
is that a priority, where does that kind of fit? And then as you know, we we get um prioritize the list and also get uh quotes to fix these things, then we can approve, you know, appropriate sources uh to to fund, you know, these repairs, right?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
So so what do you think of that idea, Tom, uh to take on your office?
Prioritize punch lists.
So the the walkabout, we would put together the the list
Yeah.
and and somewhat what our priorities would be, we would hand that off to you or to your administrative assistant, and they would be responsible for working through that list.
Okay, uh is
I mean, I think that that makes sense, right, 'cause I mean, we can't we can't fix the doors, that's that would be something
Right.
we would tell you, we think it's really important to fix the doors, and then you would then go and figure out how to do it.
Right.
And then, of course, if it costs money, you come back to this group.
Um is that is that something that was in the purview of that position previously?
Yeah, technically.
That's got to be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, it really was, it
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
is it written that way? I hope it's not adding more duties to the current role which you're hiring for.
I mean, it it probably fell into the director's responsibilities, but then they would delegate it to the administrative assistant, right?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause there's just, there there was a, there is a punch, there is or was a punch list in in a form of some um
Yeah.
you know, Microsoft Excel or Google Sheet or whatever somewhere, so maybe that's something that could be dug up as well, and then we can kind of continue to follow that more.
Okay. Yeah, I that that punch list exist, sorry, but that punch list was from the building committee, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in the building, yeah.
Just the
So presumably, I
That's not, that's not
Oh, I thought there was a separate one.
Well, the previous director, I think, appended amended that with with some other things from this group, from that walkabout, but
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'm I'm not even sure if you could find that list, I would say we could just start fresh.
Could could you just explain the term punch list, though?
Like a checklist.
Uh just a list of items that
Okay, checklist.
A checklist, a checklist, yeah.
Checklist.
Just making sure that it was.
Yeah. I would just say that I think, Tom
Um, sorry, can I just say a fair, finish what you were saying?
That was good, Jerry.
Um I believe so, there was just um um no, I I I'll it'll come back to me, go ahead.
Okay, so.
I was just gonna say, it would help, I think, for Tom to have a background about the door and how it's supposed to function. I mean, I don't, and what the issues have been.
Well, I think Tom is
Does he know that, can you?
knows about it because he's been dealing with it.
Okay, you know, okay.
I've been working with it, so, yeah, so there there is some, there is some progress on that.
Okay.
In that the the town is looking into some options for how we wanna move forward with this.
'Cause that was part software, right, wasn't it, part software too?
Doesn't shut.
Or is this too much to
Here we go. Um so the main Here we go. Um so the main entrance that the staff used to get into the building uh is on the the
By the book return.
By the book return, right. So uh facing from the parking lot on the right-hand side.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a card reader that all staff members have a card. Um and they would they would swipe this and that um that would send a message to a a software program, that would send a message to the door saying, yes, let this person in, and they'd be able to come in. Um during, now it's hard for me to know exactly timeframe of when things started falling apart. I know that we had a uh power outage uh one of my first couple of weeks here, that uh that seemed to have done some damage to the to the computer system, the software system. We had somebody in to take a look at the card reader. Um they determined that the card reader is actually fine, so when you hold the card to the reader, it flashes green, it says, yeah, you're good to go, but it's not sending the message, so it's a software issue. Um so I've been working with the town to determine um what the best method for us moving forward from that is. And so we are looking into the an option of um working with a different company. So there had been some um
That's a great idea, by the way. They were charging a lot even just to come out from the work.
Yeah, i- if we got them on the phone, we were we were having to readjust our budget, basically, 'cause they were charging a lot of money from what from what I've been told.
Yeah.
Um so I'm not I'm not exactly sure where all those those negotiations are with the town and with the the company, the current company and a potential new company. But I do know that those are actively ongoing, because we've had uh I mean, we've been going around counting doors to see like how many doors it would be that would be affected by this.
So is the town administrator's office kind of helping with that? Because they obviously have to have security for other buildings in town, so it would make sense to work with them.
Yeah. Yeah. To work with the one that everybody else in town is using?
So that's the staff door. That's the staff door. What about the front doors?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Right, uh and the front doors is controlled by the same software, right? So um it it precedes me.
Okay. Yeah.
It's 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 a little different, right? So let how may I just kind of frame this? So the staff door, it's it's badged access, it it's always locked, it's just badged access, hard access.
Yeah.
Car, yeah.
Right, 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 right.
The back door, the public door is on a, it was on a schedule, it would unlock automatically.
Right. Right.
And that went went screwy, you can't badge in that door, nobody can do that, it has to be a physical key access.
No. No, right. The key always works, by the way.
Yeah, I know. There was discussion about rekeying, rekeying the building instead.
But, just saying.
But if the key works, why are we chaining the door together?
Yeah.
'Cause people are shaking it.
Because the software, um we are not comfortable that it will always remain locked or unlocked. We're it, the software is is just is not reliable.
I see. Okay.
And so um there have been times when the uh when the software has unlocked those doors.
Yeah.
Your patrons inside.
And then patrons have, from what I've heard, patrons have wandered into the building.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Right. So um the the workaround for that, it was determined would be to padlock chain the door. So that's been work, that's been built into our opening and closing procedure that the um, which is a little tricky because the um our Grafton's finest have let us know that you can't have somebody in the building if the door is chained. It's against the law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um so the last person out needs to be doing that, first person in then goes in and removes the chains. So even before we are opening for the day, so even before at nine o'clock, we're opening for the public to come in, we have staff coming in prep time for us to get ready for opening. You know, we already have the the chain off. The um the bar that's in the center is still there until nine o'clock when we actually open for the patrons and then the doors can be freely open.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
So would it be possible, 'cause you mentioned the keys work, and I think I've heard from some librarians, they're kind of like done with the system, yes.
Frustrating, yeah.
So would it be possible to move to just keys and did like turn off the software essentially or disable the server that controls the doors? That way there's no risk of it changing midday or due to a power out, power outage, it's just whatever you physically set it to.
Um from what I understand, that's a little more complicated just because the software system controls other things besides just the door system, unlocking and locking the door system.
Oh.
So um there are some other elements such as um the uh the the panic button that this the different desks have uh is actually built into the same software system.
Yeah.
So the alerting of the dispatch that, you know, we need assistance right away um is also part of the system.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure whether it's being considered um or whether that could be handled another way. I think I think that the town administrators are looking at the options. Um but um.
I mean, it is a bit strange that it worked fine for whatever, a year, I don't know how long it was working fine, so. But um it sounds like you're doing the right things.
Right. Okay.
I mean, software usually does what it does as as a drink.
So yeah, so so when do you think we can expect the next update? Whether um uh the town has kind of decided to dump this other company and, you know, incorporate into the town?
Um so I believe the the issue at hand was that if we were going to be moving forward, there's a there's a a a fee that would be associated with moving from one company to another.
Onboarding fee or something.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
The journey, early journey should be.
Right, right. So I'm not sure, I'm I'm just, I'm not sure what our contract is with the other company and I'm not sure exactly what the onboarding would be for a new company.
Yeah.
Um those are all going through the town administrators.
Seems like time and materials based on what they're charging us, so I bet there's no contract with the other company.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so.
Uh I would I would hope that if we had a contract with them, we would be getting better service from them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um uh I believe that part of the hesitation was uh waiting for the new fiscal year, so that it freed up additional funds that could be distributed for that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I I would say that we do have the leads reimbursement money too, and that's was part of the building and that's obviously part of the infrastructure, so that should be considered.
Yeah, we do. I think that's. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and a lot of these building repairs we were talking about that you're finding from the walkabout, that's another funding source, 'cause I'm thinking like if we don't wanna just spend state aid money on these repair projects, that would be a great funding source for that.
As long as it was part of the project. Like we couldn't use it on the old building.
Really? Well, I thought it was unrestricted.
It's it's, it has to be, it has to be part of the original proposal. So like the HVAC, if you know, any of those doors were failing, anything that was part of that new project.
The lead's money.
But didn't you do, weren't there repairs done to the, we changed all the lighting, all that was repaired and cleaned and everything? And all the work that was done in the um the great room, the historical room? There's a lot of money that was spent there.
I think like, let's just say we wanted to replace a window in the front building.
And new carpet. Yeah.
I don't think that would qualify, 'cause we didn't replace windows as part of that part.
But we could ch- okay, so we could change carpets?
Yeah, but we're in the details, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Um anyway, um Tom, you should, that is something you should consider as leads money for the security system.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you should.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'd just like to add one last thing, which is um I guess I don't know, a- and we don't need to maybe discuss it here, the specifics of what else is involved in that system. You mentioned the panic button.
Hmm.
I don't know if that gets used or if it, you know, how likely it is that that gets used, do the librarians care about it? If they don't, if no one cares about it, maybe that's something where.
I care, I care about it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make sure.
Yeah, I I it's not, if we were gonna do, we were gonna look at things to remove, it really would not be one that I would remove.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
The the last thing you asked me was just um uh the administrative assistant, when when Debbie was, she would often bring things that the board would need to or she would research things that were required of the building that would come to the board. So if there's a, if there's a question about this new role for administrative assistant, I think that's fully in that purview of that job.
That's right, she did.
Yeah. Okay.
So if there's any question, let us know.
And I do know that during our interviews, we have been mentioning that one of the responsibilities would be to attend these meetings and to be the meditator for it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, good. Alright, well, thanks again for doing the walkabout. Do we have volunteers for next month? I mean, it's good for to mix it up.
Um I could take a walk around the library, make some notes. I have I have not ever done that, so why don't I do that?
Sounds great.
Yeah.
So I would also say that if if for the next one, if you're coming, I would wanna go with you. If at at some point I'm gonna be taking on the responsibility of taking that on, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yes, well, you'll take, you won't take on the walkabout ever.
Oh, so you would still do, so we, if Tom doing the punch list, you would still do the walkabout?
We did. Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, so we would just always give you the list and you guys would compile it and remove the duplicates, 'cause you're like, oh, well, John mentioned this last time.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, and just compile it for us, 'cause otherwise it doesn't really go anywhere.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
But you're welcome to do a a an independent walkabout and then you'll join periodically too.
Great. Yeah.
Sounds great. Alright, um onward to walkabout, onwards to new business. Um so the first is um two change orders from the Kupla. Um I distributed those in the email. Um so there were you know, essentially what William told me was that when they came and did the Kupla, right, they went up, I think, with like a bucket truck or something and that's how they came up with what needed to get repaired. Of course, once they got the scaffolding up and they started working on it, there were a few little items that they just did not uh see in the initial um inspection, so that's what these two change orders are. Um the first one, which is called PCO, I don't know what the P stands for. Project change order? I don't know, project change order one, was really just um adding some flashing and the original proposal was using aluminum flashing and as you can read in this sheet, something about how you use those, that flashing and create seams and stuff like that, um in being able to solder them or not solder them because they're aluminum. They have this change order for six thousand ninety-eight dollars. Um and it's really replacing that flashing with copper flashing. Um and as you read, it says that they think it will last a lot longer. So that's um change order one.
Yeah.
Um and change order two, which is considerably smaller, twenty-nine fifty-four, is for additional trim work um for repairing one of the inside columns that they did not see in the initial inspection. So the town Williams coming to us, asking us to fund these two change orders.
We uh briefly looked at these last meeting, I think.
We did.
We just didn't discuss it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um you know, I think the neither one of these are, I think, required, they're just recommended. Um and considering that they're up there and all the scaffolding's up there, um right, it would, i- if we had the money and the support, I think it would be good to do this now. Um I think the funds would come from state aid. Um they could potentially come from um the trusts that we manage uh because it is it is part of the permanent building.
So. Uh I'll make a motion to approve the two change orders for the Kupla repair, funding from state aid.
Alright, motion made and seconded. Any questions, discussion?
Um this is a a pretty big dent into state aid money. Is there any other funding source? Um I know you said this is the the historical part of the building, so it may not be able to come from the um the leads money, right?
Mm-hmm. That's my impression, is that you wouldn't be able to use leads from this.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so what I wanted to bring up earlier when we talked about leads is um if someone gives the library uh two hundred thousand dollars and said you can only use it on the building you just built, how can you realistically spend two hundred thousand dollars? Maybe you can, but I can't imagine it unless it's a really shoddy job, right? So I would like to question how we can actually use that leads money, if it has to be on only the new part of the building or if it can be on the whole building.
Why do we think it has to be the new?
So it doesn't, it doesn't actually have to be used, 'cause it's a reimbursement, so it could be used just to pay down the bond.
Yes. Okay.
Right, the town owns, uh town still needs to pay off however millions of dollars, this would just go off to pay off the the bond.
Right.
But it cannot, you, there's somewhere where it's written that it has to be for the physically, anything that's already been done to the building?
It has to be part of the pro- the project, right? It's a reimbursement for the project.
Okay, Kupla is not considered part of the project because it it wasn't, even though it's, but if something happened in the in the in the historical room.
Well, the HVAC to me is a perfect example, right? That's part, something that was put in as part of that project, it's failing, the security system, it's failing.
Okay. Right.
For the security system.
Okay, okay. Okay.
That's appropriate. Now, we don't have to spend any of the leads money, because you could just use it to pay off the bond, the the debt bond, whatever they call it, the bond.
But then we, I thought, do we decide as a group that we should, we should use it for some of these projects? Is, I mean, I don't mean this, the library's not that old and these these issues are coming up, which we kind of thought they might, so there may be more, this would just be the beginning. There may be subsequent issues, especially with the HVAC, there could be other things that don't go well, well, from all the stories we've heard about how it works and doesn't work and that.
Well, we've also talked about like reinforcing the doors too.
Right, we have to do that for the flood, flood issue.
That could prevent future flooding, you know?
But the, but the, that money can't cover this.
It can't cover the cost, so we can we can talk about it in the next one.
So, I mean, talk about that.
Okay, alright, so we need to find, so I'll, so according per Aaron, we need to find another source and you said it could be within some of those funds or they could come
It could be from the the state aid or um it could come from the like the Wheelock Trust, the Geo Wilson Trust. Those were the trusts that were given.
To support that physical building.
The trustees to to. Correct.
Okay. Do we know how much is in those? This is like eight thousand, right?
Ten. Uh there's certainly, there's certainly, yeah, eight thousand dollars in there, yes.
Eight and a half thousand. Maybe that's, maybe we should use it from there. Should we consider that? So we have more, so we have state aid is something for other purposes?
Do you, do you happen to know what the state aid balance is?
I don't.
Probably not, it's a topic that I don't know.
I have to find out. I I forget, I think it was getting low, but I don't know.
'Cause we s- we spent, suppose seventy-five thousand dollars for the Kupla already from state aid?
Uh there was a one for sixty during my first meeting.
Oh, sixty thousand. Right, but we paid, we paid for a third or a certain portion.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I think I think wasn't it like sixty? I don't think it was seventy-five.
Okay.
It might have been sixty.
But there was an additional piece, wasn't there?
Well, and this is something we need to do fairly quickly, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well then we need to.
I guess if we have those other trusts, like the state aid is a little bit more flexibility as to what we can spend it on than the trust, so maybe it makes sense to to use some of the trust.
Yeah.
I think we could do.
Yeah, and we can split it too, right? You could, we could pay one off of one account and one off the other account.
Yeah, I, that's what I think, I think we should, I think we should use those two tr- two trusts, do it the way you suggested, divide it in half. 'Cause that's what they're for and that's what we're doing. And this is the old part of the building and the money was given a long time ago, so it would make sense.
Mm-hmm.
So use both of the trusts to pay for, okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's in the state, so we have to amend the.
It's in the state, okay. So I'll amend my motion to.
Can I ask one question before?
Yeah.
For the trusts, um it sounds like what the balance amount's probably the expectation is, we would spend principal on them?
It's.
Is there any restrictions on that?
Well, there's um there's the principal that you cannot spend or the base that you cannot spend and then you basically it earns interest and that's the monies that you can spend.
Oh, and this is the eight thousand you mentioned or whatever the number was, is the amount that can be spent from interest?
It's. It's more than that, I think, yeah, yeah. So I think it's, I think the trust balance would more than cover the whatever this is, nine thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, alright.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're gonna split in two.
I don't know what you mean by split in two.
Oh, between two different, oh, okay, you're saying together. I was saying there's two different trusts, right? So I thought we might divide it in half, thirty-five hundred for one, thirty-five, I thought that's what you meant, and then I misunderstood.
Oh, I see.
So. I'll, I'll amend the motion to say uh.
Sorry, before you do that, what I meant is you could, we could spend, you could, you could pay some off state aid, some off of the Geo Wilson Trust or some off the Wheelock Trust.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Alright, so I was thinking use those two trusts and why not just divide it in two? Would that make sense?
It it does what Tom is gonna.
Yeah, that's, so I was gonna say, uh I'd like to amend the motion to uh approve the funding for the two Kupla change orders funded from the Wheelock Trust and, what was the second?
Geo Wilson.
And the Geo Wilson Trust. And I'd even say with a backup of state aid in the case that those two do not have the appropriate funding. And that way we don't have to.
I think we'd have to go another motion for another, yeah.
Yeah, right. If that fails, then I think we should bring it to the capital campaign. 'Cause if if we're getting low on the state aids, I I don't know what it is. I th- I can't.
I don't know what it is either. I think we should encourage Tom, like, to get a monthly report on the, from the uh town, their account.
Well, it's.
Maybe, yeah, 'cause. Yeah, that would be good, the state aid.
The motion's still on the, the motion's still there.
The motion's still there. But did you amend it with the the balance going to state aid or just half and half?
The motion's. Sorry, so to be more clear, uh I want to amend the motion to approve both of the Kupla change orders to be paid from both the Wheelock Trust and the Geo Wilson Trust with a backup funding source of state aid if those two trusts do not contain enough money. 'Cause in theory, they'll, yeah.
Kupla do that? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, okay, alright. Uh motion made, anyone care to second, seconded by Kerry? Uh any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
And that that way we just don't have to come back in case those two trusts don't have enough.
Yeah. I would agree. I know, 'cause I know they're wait, they're ready to start on that, or, yeah.
They need the money right away, we need to do it.
So 'cause to what you're saying is that it it's the amount, we're not changing the amount that we're funding, you're just saying that if we go say, oh shoot, we don't have enough money, that's, yeah.
Let's use up the money in the Wheelock, use up the money in the Geo Wilson, and then if there's another two, three thousand dollars left that we need to pay, it'll cover state aid.
The spent of the money, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, this.
That was perfect, because we're the backups funding source to me. That was perfect because we're the backups funding source, we we won't use the state aid.
Yeah. Yeah, unless we absolutely have to, but it sounds like even if there it sounds like there's enough money in those two trusts to cover it.
Unless we need to. Absolutely.
If there aren't, they can cover the majority of it.
Yeah.
That's that's the impression I get.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Great. Any other discussion? Alright, uh on the paper. I post, I declare the motion carried, thank you for that.
Aye.
Um next is the HVAC repair. Um Tom, I don't know if you wanna give a quick summary or if I'll just read the two change orders. I can start, I'll start.
The brief, I mean, the brief overview is that we've been having problems with the HVAC. And um so that things such as the um study rooms um going up to about like seventy-nine degrees, even though they're set not for seventy-nine degrees. Um and so the the different areas of the building are are not functioning as it's supposed to be. We recently had uh the company that handles it, Reno, and to do a a just a scheduled maintenance and and evaluation. Um it was determined that there are two units that are not functioning, that need to be replaced.
So.
They are.
May I ask you to pause for just a moment? Because we discussed these and approved um funding sources last meeting. For these aren't any different from what we talked about last meeting, correct?
No, I didn't think we actually approved the the.
I didn't remember this doing.
Yeah, so it's a discussion was held to determine if the leads money could be used uh for that purpose. This is a failing HVAC system. The motion was made by Aaron to approve the warranty work presented by Reno for the HVAC in the amount of seventy-one hundred and fifty-three hundred that we paid from the building account using leads money up to fifteen thousand dollars. So we discussed that at length, right? To make sure that we up to the amount, cause it said as of today, do you remember this discussion? It's you know twelve thousand dollars, but it could change tomorrow.
Right.
Right? So we said up to fifteen thousand dollars. Motion was seconded by Carrie and um voted unanimously.
So we've already done this work, do we get?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I will apologize for doing that, I didn't realize, I know we I remember the discussions, but I didn't remember we actually voted for it.
Will we write there? I just I think we didn't see the actual invoice.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think.
I didn't mean to cut you off, I just.
No, it's not, no.
No, that's true, no.
First of all, it's already done.
Is the monetary amount appropriate for both units?
Um this is all we have are the two um.
Okay.
Um estimates.
The units are are currently under warranty?
Okay, well, okay.
Just labor, it's 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 just the labor.
So this is.
Cause these are all warranty, it's just the labor.
Right, it's just the labor, maybe it would be.
Okay.
And the recharging on it.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, Aaron, for doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the the current amount looks like just over twelve thousand dollars, which falls under.
I'm used to it.
It's twelve four, yeah.
So we need to prove, right, so, okay.
Okay. Yep.
Okay.
Alright, great, excellent.
Awesome.
Um next up on new business is uh staff development day, Tom.
Right, so um I've I've learned that that the staff has a development day four times a year. Um and there's one scheduled currently scheduled for um August fifteenth. And I'm requesting that we could move that to a later date um for a couple of reasons. Uh one is prep preparation time, actually you have one more time, you get up to speed to know what types of things to schedule for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um as well, um the heiress reports are due April uh August sixteenth. And so um they're taking a a lot of time. Uh so I don't know if you're familiar with heiress reports.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, okay, so there uh I don't remember what the acronym is, uh or actually it's not an acronym, uh right?
It is, cause you can say it heiress.
It is.
Cause you can say it, okay, okay, good.
Yeah.
It is. Uh uh I know how to say it, I don't know what it means.
Trying to learn that last time, didn't we?
Okay.
Um but I do know that it is it is uh part of our NBLC funding. So uh along with spending a certain amount of of our uh our percent percentage of on materials, then we are also required to submit um extensive reports of um uh staffing, uh degrees held by staff, um uh holdings, so how many items we hold, um circulation, uh programming. So basically just a a yearly summary of not even a summary, a yearly uh report about um what we've done
Okay.
in in the past fiscal year. Um it is, it's about thirty-five pages and uh.
One percent doing it.
And it's my first time doing it and and it's a it's a some of the numbers are a little more obscure than others. Um so uh.
But you have one of our previous heiress reports and so you like you know all the information that's in there, it's just a matter of digging it up.
I have.
You would know.
Um. Yeah, um so as I'm filling out the report, uh there is an option for looking at last year's numbers.
Yeah.
Right, so which is a big big help because it gives me sort of a guidance of am I looking for three or am I looking for three thousand?
Right.
Um uh I've 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 been in contact with NBLC because some of those numbers were um uh were were not accurate.
Yep.
Um and so uh there's there's still there's still a a lot and they don't always tell, it it gives the number. So I know that like, oh, I should be looking for about this number, but it doesn't it doesn't tell where that number came from.
Yep.
So um.
And are you are you able to work with various staff at the library to get all that information?
Um staff has been good because they've they've they keep track of of the numbers throughout the year.
Yeah.
So when they're doing a a program, they're putting down what the program is, uh how many people attended, you know, so all that is kept in the staff. So a lot of that is is uh is available. Um CW Marsh provides a fair amount of it and then it's reaching out to different vendors like Overdrive to say how many books do you, how many ebooks do we really have?
Mm-hmm.
Um and so it's it's reaching out to a lot of different vendors, uh.
Well, thank you for taking the time to do it accurately.
So you're.
You know, I s- I s- I actually spoke to somebody from NBLC today, cause they they're this time of year, they have a lot of open Zoom meetings that people can can just jump into and say, help, I don't know what this number is. Um and uh they they just wanna know what it is, you know, and if it's significantly different, um they just wanna know, you know, just give you, you know, there's there's a note field to give an explanation. So for instance, our our circulation's down from last year. Of course it is because the children's room has been closed and so much of our circulation comes from there.
The children's room. Right, and we don't have all the material.
And so they they just wanna know what it is. Um but uh you know, um and and they did indicate that there are certain areas that basically every library reports wrong, such as how many e uh ebooks you have, um you know, which ones go into this this question and which ones go into that question. Um so uh I'm just taking the time to do it right.
Okay.
So.
So as far as the staff development day?
Um so. Yeah, so it started to to get back to that, um the we're that 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 time is also the the run-up and run-up for the um friends. And so you know, there's there's gonna be a lot of other activity going on in the area. Um there has been some scheduling conflict, I mean, there's no date to get everybody available. Um but I've looked at the uh the leave requests and there's nothing for uh August twenty-ninth, Thursday, August twenty-ninth is what I'm requesting. Um there's there's uh nobody currently has a leave request in for that day and we don't have anything on the events calendar to be scheduled.
And the the kids are back to school, the public school, yeah.
And the kids are back to school, which certainly helps for our staff.
Yeah.
Because then it's more likely that somebody who, well, I can only work in the evenings because, you know, so they can they could attend and something like this.
And we have less people in the library during the day.
Well, I mean, we'd be closed.
Should close, you close it.
Yeah.
We'd be closed, which, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean. Yeah, yeah.
Which is why I'm bringing.
Less pe- less potential people wanting to be in the library.
Right, we wouldn't have people, you know, coming and knocking at the doors that may or may not be locked. So uh why I'm bringing it up here is because it it does require an approval of a day being closed. So I think that I think that means that you guys have to formally.
Yep. Official accepted motion.
I'll make a, yeah, I'll make a motion to reschedule the staff development day from August fifteenth twenty twenty-four to Thursday, August twenty-ninth twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Alright, motion made and seconded, any questions, discussion? Alright, all in paper?
Aye.
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 Alright, declare the motion carried.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, we have the policy update by Aaron.
So uh our the policy committee met on uh July tenth in the uh room two nineteen at the library. Um John uh and Tom and I um met for the first time, so a lot of the discussion was surrounding kind of uh the procedure of of how the sub uh policy subcommittee works. Um but we were able to hash out um what what the three of us had agreed upon on like the policy lifecycle, okay? I think just kind of starting with that framing helps kind of just um helps me kind of talk about the other policies that we have in the works, right? So really, where is the policy? Um the policy starts with uh the director. Um the director will write a draft policy, so that's you know, step one. That draft policy then comes to the the subcommittee, um which we will write and rewrite and discuss and make edits until we have a draft we feel is ready to go to legal. Um and then legal will review it uh before uh it goes to union. Uh we felt that, you know, rather than flipping it the other way around, it is a better way to do it. And then after it um passes uh union um uh scrutiny, then it comes to the trustees uh for vote, right? So uh by the time it gets to the trustees, we talked about really there's a ton of deliberation about, oh, I don't think it should be written that way. Um it'll just go back to the policy subcommittee again or the director and the director will rewrite it and we'll kind of start the lifecycle over again. And we hope that by that point, it's touched enough people that we feel it's ready for for vote.
Mm-hmm.
So that said, um we uh we discussed the epidemic pandemic policy uh cause that one kind of needed a major rewrite uh because it was written very specifically for, you know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um so that one uh we worked on quite a while ago and that one's ready for legal. So it's at, you know, kind of step three, after it goes to legal, it'll go to union. So um Tom was uh gonna work with William Blake to kind of determine, you know, who who that should go directly to in that process. Um so nothing goes directly from the policy subcommittee, nothing goes directly from the trustees. It'll all be funneled through Tom to interface with the town.
Okay.
Um so then the next one we talked about was uh Tom brought up the circulation policy, which he felt was wildly out of date. Just had a lot of numbers and figures about fees and and whatnot. It just wouldn't really serve anybody uh because it was so out of date. So uh that is at step one, which is uh the director uh will will read that and rewrite it. And then go to subcommittee and follow the process. Um the next thing that was brought up was um if we had a policy surrounding, you know, First Amendment auditors. Uh because it was very pertinent, cause we had someone come to the library, uh Tom brought that up. Uh but we kind of talked about it's difficult to write a policy specific to the library about First Amendment auditors. Uh and better to reference other policies that are already writ- written for that purpose. So maybe come up with a cheat sheet, so that one really won't come to the board um as something to approve in the future. So that was kind of what we discussed there. Um and then the the three D printing policy, we had just um that one didn't get reviewed by the union, so they reviewed that. And that one is now um going to be posted and uh and hopefully put into practice, so.
Excellent.
Um and that's it, any questions? So our next meeting, I think it's on the agenda.
It's this hour or so.
Will be August seventh, so if somebody would like to uh join us, you're welcome to. Um uh we will be kind of working off a running agenda of um, let's see, I don't have it in front of me. I don't have that in front of me, so.
We'll probably be talking about policies.
Yes.
And where the date is publicly posted, we can be in a larger group for the policy subcommittee?
You cannot, we still cannot have a quarter.
Okay.
So it's we can, we need public session.
Oh, that's right, that you you post that.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you already did that, yeah.
You post that.
Yeah.
It is posted, so you just can.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I should, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep, uh thank you.
Yep, so. I keep pulling up the wrong document.
You can always check the town calendar.
Okay, if it's there.
Because if it's posted, it'll be on the town calendar, including the agenda.
Okay.
Yep, so the draft agenda, I've got it. So uh we'll be talking with the program policy, uh library displays policy, uh the volunteer policy and the material selection policy is our ongoing business. Um and then potentially the circulation policy if uh Tom has got that ready for us to review, so.
Which one?
The circulation policy.
Circulation, right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on policy?
We are hoping to have a one additional member, so we're hoping that uh someone from staff can join us.
From staff, okay.
Yep.
Alright, back to you, Tom, director's report.
Again. Alright, so I um I've been looking at ways to identify how we're doing to assess.
Mm-hmm.
And um uh if anybody's wondering how we're doing, I would invite you to come to the library on a rainy Monday and go to the children's uh and come to your children's room because it was packed today. Um and so uh you know, there's certainly anecdotal ways of recognizing how what we're doing um like that. Um and you know, successes that we're seeing in the library, but um I'm also looking at numbers as well because that that fills in the rest of the of the of the of the picture. Um so you know, looking at at how many people in town consider us a valuable place um by becoming members and and what they're doing there and you know, what they're what they're doing when they're in the library. So um end of the fiscal year was a seemed like a good time to start looking at some numbers. Um so I've I've been primarily looking at at June. Um so I looked at fiscal year uh uh twenty-three, so the previous year, and then compared it to the fiscal year twenty-four, which has ended. And um I'm sure if I asked you what you think happened, you'd probably be able to guess that our numbers are down. Um and um that was to be expected for a lot of, if you, you know, a lot of reasons. But um but in a nutshell, um you know, we're looking at uh fiscal year twenty-three, new patrons added was um uh a little over eleven hundred, um twenty-four, it was about eight hundred and thirty. So um we had fewer people who are joining. Um uh total circulation for fiscal year twenty-three was uh almost hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh for fiscal year twenty-four, it was a little over, it was a hundred and six thousand. So um you know, it's the the numbers are are lower. Um items owned didn't vary all that much significantly, um though it is affected by everything that's happening in the library because um uh that number is both an an addition and a subtraction.
Sure.
Because we're doing, we're constantly doing weeding to make sure that the 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 collection is viable and pertinent and timely. So uh just seeing the number, so the the items owned in in twenty-three was about seventy thousand and now it's a little uh for twenty-four, it's a little over seventy-one thousand. That doesn't necessarily just mean, oh, you added thirteen hundred things to the library. It means we subtracted a couple of thousand and we added a couple of thousand plus a hundred, uh you know, eleven hundred or so.
Mm-hmm.
Um and uh I will say one area that that even with the comparing these two years um is electronic resources are going up considerably. So our Overdrive checkouts, Overdrive Libby, checkouts for fiscal year twenty-three were about well over thirty-six thousand. Uh for twenty-four, they're about fifty thousand. So that's certainly one area that the that the um that patrons are embracing.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that uh now that we've added hoopla back in, that's only gonna be even more substantial, I think. Um so you know, we 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 took a dip, but um I think we're heading in the right direction. So looking um at where we are a little more currently, um I looked at the the months leading up, so April, May and June to see what we're doing. Um total circulation for April was about seven thousand nine, seven point nine thousand. Um May was eight thousand, basically even. Um June was up to eight point eight thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So you know, in a in a month, that's that's a fair amount to jump um for uh for new circulation. And when I checked this, which was uh before when we were gonna have the other meeting, um we were already over eight thousand. So um July looks to be continuing that trend, which I'm pleased, I'm pleased with. Um Overdrive for the month of June, um ebooks was about was over sixteen hundred, e-audio books were over seventeen hundred. So again, that's that's continuing that trend that um I mean, we're we're definitely seeing movement um uh increase in in uh in circulation, um in certain areas that are definitely the popular areas. For and hoopla, we added hoopla back in. Um and uh we're seeing uh we added it back in in May, um and it was about a hundred or so. Um and it was about a hundred or so checkouts, uh June was about three hundred checkouts.
Mm-hmm.
So people are embracing that and you know that.
Mm?
People really like.
Yeah, oh, they certainly do. And and you know, having hoopla and overdrive are are work work really well together, actually. Uh because they really do cater to different needs of the patrons. So um so they're working, they're working well together. Um just to give you some more numbers for for June, how we're doing, um in June, we had about twenty-three programs, about three hundred and two attendees. So that is is pretty active. Um I will say the the majority of that, and by I mean, I mean like twenty of the twenty-three, were children's room.
Yeah.
Were were program, children's programming, because we're just not able to do the adult programming. So hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to be adding that back in and get those numbers up even even higher. But the but the programming that we're having right now is is doing really well and really well attended. Um patrons added just for June was um seventy-one, which is really good. That's that's a that's definitely a jump from the previous months, which were under sixty, so. Um it may not seem like a big jump, but
No, it is, it is.
you know, when you think about like, well gee, everybody has a library card, so nobody's coming in for the one of those. They really are, they're really, they're they're still discovering us, they're still, they're still coming in. Uh museum pass has continued to be popular, um we're we're seeing over one a day checking out. So that's that's great, and especially this time of year, we're gonna see another bump up.
Mm-hmm.
Because because um room reservations doing really well, hundred and seventy-eight for the month of June. Um computer usage, um uh for the adult section was about a hundred twenty-five for the month, children's room a hundred and eleven. So we're seeing in both areas, as young adults doesn't have any any public computers, so they would be using, they would imagine adults. Um so we're we're definitely seeing usage there, so people are um I don't wanna focus just on what they're checking out from the library, because we're also just a community home.
Mm-hmm.
And uh I'm certainly seeing it that that we have people who um I see come into the library at, you know, they get there at nine and when I'm leaving at five or whatever, um they're still there, you know, people are who are um telecommuters are um are using us as a viable area, so um I'm happy with that, I'm good with that. Um because we're recognized as as a as a a welcoming space. Um us being a cool space during the heat, like, didn't hurt either.
Mm-hmm.
Um uh reference questions, um we're getting uh considerable those. Um adults were doing about four a day or or more, we're doing eighty-nine for the month, so you know, I'm not counting Sundays. Um children's room as well, so they're getting as well. Um we have a new staff member who joined us uh in the reference area, Sisera Lavelle. Um had been working as a temp and then joined, uh we had an opening. And so uh she was selected as the new staff member to join our our reference staff. So she's um having her come in, having been a temp has been seamless. Um and I've been working with her to to get her to know everything that yeah else she needs to know. She's doing great displays, by the way. Um so uh so that's really great, so it's really good to have her. Um she um she joined the beginning of July, she's working on a a master's library science degree, actually. So another another feather in our cap, another um if that, for the people who that means something to.
That's so great. No, that's wonderful, yeah.
It'll mean something. Um and then uh and then uh the administrative assistant position we have, which we we think we're going to be
That's fantastic.
we're gonna be moving toward in a positive way. So um so that's good. Uh I've had a a number of patrons um hunt me out and uh and introduce themselves to me uh both in the library and around town, which has been nice. I've I've been over at the farmer's market and had people come up and say, I saw you at the at the library, so um it's been.
You're you're recognizable, that's good.
I'm recognizable, I don't know how to take that, but I will I will accept it, at least. Um there's been press coverage recently, so uh I did an interview with the, what's that called, Traffic, Traffic Town News.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh so there was a front page article there, so that they cut us a little exposure.
That's what they wanted to do.
Yeah, you know, it was great, it was great. So it was a positive way to promote the library and uh and it was a really, it was a really nice article, I think.
Thank you for doing it.
Um so that was, that was very positive.
Thank you, Tom, for being so good at that. It's very important.
Oh. Um you know, I'm I'm out there, I'm out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um uh for the most part, everybody's been, the patrons have been wonderful and, I mean, no, they've all been wonderful. But um they've been mostly positive. Uh uh there has been the question, the perennial question of why isn't children's room gonna be reopening? Um which which I'm still being a little bit cagey on, just because we're we're not quite there yet. And uh I don't wanna set un- you know, unreasonable expectations for them. Um but uh everybody is is thankful for a conversation, and that's really what I'm saying. Um I've also had a number of patrons, um uh different patrons contacting me about something that I that they are saying that was brought before the board previously, which was the idea of putting up a flag pole at the library.
Yeah.
Um and so they they just wanted me to make sure that I uh reminded you that that was still on their radar, that they are looking for uh something along those lines. Um the conversations I've had have been have been fine and and uh they've been very understanding, um questioning things like, well, you know, I see I see flags in the library, meaning like little plastic flags stuck in a a pencil holder, you know?
Mm-hmm.
It's like, well, you got those, why can't you have a flag pole?
That's vastly different.
And, yeah, a little bit, a little bit. It's like, this is easy, um you know, let's just start with where are we gonna put it, you know, and uh and.
Who's gonna take care of it?
Who's gonna take care of it?
Who who would raise it and mow it and?
You know, and that, you know, it it was kind of interesting, I was talking with somebody and you know once you start talking about the particulars, then you realize how much is involved, you know? And so I'm saying like, it's not just, you know, you you buy a pole, you stick it in the ground and you run a flag up. Um you have to have lighting on, you know, like, you know, it can't be left overnight in the dark without appropriate lighting. And you know, people who are asking for something like this understand that we wanna do it with with the 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 appropriate reverence for the flag, so. Um I don't know the history, the backstory of where that came from or where it was for you. I but I, the one thing that I I do remind them is that we have had a few other things that needed more urgent addressing. And uh they're completely satisfied with that response.
I I do wanna talk about that a little bit, but I wanna make sure that you get through your director's report.
No, no, that's 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 pretty much it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Um I had a question, just a couple of things about the director's report, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um i- is this data uh collected somewhere that, you know, um someone like me can get access to, or is it public record?
Um.
Or how's it collected?
It it's, so I called it from different areas.
Yeah.
There are a number of areas that I would need to go to, and some of them you you decidedly wouldn't have access to.
Sure, sure.
Like the backend of CWR's to look at circulations, does it?
We can talk about it offline.
Yeah, but I mean, I can.
I think most of that data would be once a year through the Harris report, right?
We used to gather. Didn't, I thought Beth gave it to us more.
And then, well, Beth would give us basically that, what he's bringing out.
The summary, yeah.
And that's one of the things I'm gonna mention is, the director's report, it'd be great if you could send it to the board like a week in advance.
Okay. Okay.
Because then we can read through it, and we'd have, you know, all that information come with the with the meeting.
Okay. Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
So, I mean, obviously, I'm putting some together, right?
Yeah.
So I can, I can share this.
Yeah, I would love to see some sort of data.
Yeah, yeah, so before the next meeting, I'll be sure to to share that and um.
And then one one question about the um the the temp staff.
Yeah.
Um so if that was, was that a Biblio temp? Um beca- do we have to pay off like the 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 temp agency for that?
No, 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 no.
No, okay. Cause that was always a question, it's difficult to hire staff over temps.
I I don't beli- I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
They're paying you right through the town as a temp?
Right, yep, yep.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yes, they are.
That's all I have, thank you.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any other questions besides the flag pole for Tom? Yeah, well, thanks for putting that together, I mean, I I that that's the the kind of the circulation, the program rooms, that stuff is all really good information for the board. Um especially when we can see trends and stuff like that.
Right, right.
So anything that you can put together in your report, whether it's a visual or some kind of table or something like that, that shows the trends, that that really helps the board.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um so the, so for the flag pole, yeah, we were approached last fall, I think it was, in the fall, um by the patrons.
Okay.
Um asking about the flag pole, and at the time, we, I think we talked about it at one of our meetings and um with everything else going on, we just kind of pushed it off until this, I think, the spring or something like that. So they did reach, they also reached back um to the trustees, I think it was to the all of you guys, right? You all on that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
Yeah, yeah. Um so I think, you know, I I guess unless the board just is not in favor at all, um it might be worth just getting some more information. Um you know, yes.
I mean, how we can do it?
Like uh how much it would cost, you know, potential places where it would go, who would be responsible for putting it up and down, who would fund it?
Yeah, I guess.
Um.
Yeah, so you did that, so that research, right?
I did a little bit of that, yeah.
Yeah, and I've been thinking a a lot about it too, and you know, the staff have to bring it up and down or someone in town do that. But I talked to the Boy Scouts uh leaders about this and like like Tom said and you said, put some lights on it and it's okay.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of, you know, you're giving the proper reverence and and that's it. So so as a board, we could do that if we just funded it and put some lights on it.
Yeah.
Um and then if it got too worn, you know, we could ask the Boy Scouts to take it down, do it and dispose of it properly and replace it. So that would be only maintenance we would need to do with it.
Yeah, so.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean the lights are on all the time, day and night?
Yes. Uh.
Is that what it's supposed to be with the flag?
Maybe not, it probably doesn't appear during the day, but the point is when it's dark out, it it would need to be lit, that's like the flag code.
Is that what I've seen though?
Yeah.
I do not know.
Yeah. Yeah. I I mean, I've done a little bit of research about just other libraries in town, I mean, in the state and
Yeah.
you know, most of the ones I looked at do not have flags, unless there's, like Shrewsbury has a like a memorial like on that corner with the flag, and it happens to be in front of the library. Uh but a lot of libraries that I've seen, Millbury, um Westboro, Uxbridge, they don't have flags. Um so I don't, I don't, I don't see a really strong need, not that I'm opposed to putting a flag up, it's just I don't see a strong need at the library because there's a lot of places in town that have a a flag, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see a strong presence from the community, I mean, I'll support a flag at the library. Um you know, we've had two patrons come to a meeting, but you've heard a lot more from patrons as well?
No, it's the same.
Are the same patrons?
It could, I think it's the same ones, because, just from my conversations, it sounded, it I got the feeling that they had, they were the ones who brought it to you.
It's the same person.
Yeah. Yeah.
I also talked to one of the, at the, it's a husband and wife, I talked to the wife, just 'cause I see her around town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, did they, I'm sorry, didn't they offer to fund it too? No.
Not at the initial, no.
Or did it?
Okay.
I mean, I I would say we should just defer it for now, again, again, given everything else going on. Um and then we can revisit it, you know?
Like, you mean, until like after the children's room, like all the rest of the town?
Yeah, children's room, HVAC doors, you know, kind of the more important pressing issues, um.
Yes.
So no matter where it is, it has to be illuminated, if it was.
Yeah.
Unless it's taken down every night.
What if it was, um is it ever, are, would it ever be like um inside?
Yeah.
Like sometimes you see the, you see flags, but they're not uh they're not, they're standing.
Well, you could put, you could put one in the dust for you.
If they're standing by them, they're not, I don't know what to say, they're not like strong, they're not fully, fully done. But the these, uh these patrons specifically wanted something outside the library, or they were very clear, that's what they want. Okay.
They do, there's a lot like a problem.
Okay.
They did, they, yeah, they they um
Okay.
they did indicate that they they would like it to be so like when somebody's driving by, they see the flag there displayed.
Yeah.
Is there one at the municipal center?
Yes.
And that's lit all the time?
I would assume so, unless they take it down at night.
Oh, maybe they do.
Right.
I don't recall it being lit, but I put it.
I believe there's one on the common as well.
I could've just missed it too.
On the common?
Is there? I I thought there was one.
I don't, I don't think on the common.
I feel like there's.
I don't think so.
Is there not one on the other side of the common, near the um Congregational Church?
Oh.
Cause there's the mo- memorials over on that side.
There are. There's a memorial like in the center, like that. There is some, I don't know, I know what he's talking about.
Well, islands, right?
There's a, there's a little island, like on the upper side of the common
Yeah.
uh between the common and the uh the church, the congregational church.
Okay, so there. I know what you're talking about, I don't know if it. Is that near uncommon cow, or is that, no, another?
Yeah.
Uh she she's somewhere near the congregational church, at the other side, because there's that little.
Yeah, yeah.
There's another memorial, I think.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I'm thinking about the one that's kind of like.
Huh.
Down low, too.
I'd have to look, there might be one, man.
I'd have to look too.
I don't.
That's a good point, yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
There's absolutely one um by the middle school, because they've they've actually done a Memorial Day services there, like there's a a giant one.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know, like I've noticed, like, you know, driving up to, you know, to drop off and pick up, they do raisin mowing.
I think that is actually one of the rules also, is if there's a significant depth that you have to put it at half mast.
Yes.
So someone, someone at the library would have to be responsible somewhat for that.
I guess that 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 brings my question, is that we talked about, the grounds are really not part, like, it's not really the libraries for the town, right?
Like the the front is part of the common, we were saying.
It's part of the common, it's not, like, we, we're not responsible for mowing, like, I mean, we do have your, the patios, but
Uh.
I if if there was a flag, it really would be, I think, the town's responsibility
Yeah.
to to do the mowing, it it really would really.
Um.
Yeah, that's a question, I, that's a good question, I don't know. Certainly, the front of the historic side of the building is is considered the common, but there's the the traffic circle thing with the, where the actual grafted side sign is, I I don't know if that's considered town.
I mean, they, they do. I don't know.
I mean, they do mow and stuff, but.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, but I think, I think we own, technically, we own the parking lot, right? Cause it was not the
Yeah.
the stipulation of some of the funding, I think, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I think you mentioned something about that.
Oh, yes, you're right, absolutely.
Technically, it is.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Liberal.
That is, yes, okay.
Liberal parking lot, um for official library business only.
That is correct, that's correct. I mean, it's technically not supposed to be used, it's only supposed to be, it's only supposed to be used for library.
In farmer's market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But being, you know, a community center in a way.
Right. Okay, so I know we're getting late, so why don't we, I mean, I, what I hear is that there's interest, right? There's some support by the board, uh but there's still a lot of questions. Um so.
Go ahead.
So and then John requested deferring it, because yes, the board has a lot of other stuff we're doing, and certainly, at least until the children's is back up and running and we have that reopening, so we could defer it to whatever, September.
I I would like to see this kind of go on, again, I'm gonna keep using the word punchless, I get used to it. You know, perhaps something that um the administrative assistant could bring to the board. I mean, we can certainly help facilitate some of that research, um if needed, but you know, maybe just a a general ballpark cost.
Yeah.
Something like that could go on that list.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and once, once we're fully staffed, we have a scribe for the board, that would be a great task to bring to the, back to the board.
And when you're talking about, would it have to be on a pole?
Right, so.
It can't be like, it can't be like attached to something else. It would have to be on a, on a standalone pole.
This is just what the the patron requested it, and you know, it's a, it's it's your typical mount pole, thirty foot tall pole.
I don't know if they do, I think there could be room within that.
Twenty foot. Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay.
I think there is.
So if if you're requesting.
Cause then I wouldn't, it, well, it would be easier to take care of, right? Well, though, if you had it on the side, I think you'd have, you might have to take it down if it's on.
The side of the building, you mean, like a?
I don't, I don't think we would do the side of the building. Or something.
I don't think, I don't think we would consider that, cause we don't wanna touch the envelope of the building.
No. No, but I'm just wondering if it has to be. Okay, I just thought it could be on something else, not the building.
I I would say that's gonna be something that we would talk about in the, in the, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah, not the building.
Okay.
I definitely. I know you can't touch the building. The dir- the the direction of having a a a flag pole that's illuminated, that doesn't require library staff to, you know, on a daily basis, raise and lower, is that, I would be in support of that. I would not be in support of having a library staff have to move to move up and down, the, and I don't think that's appropriate for library staff.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's.
In that.
Yeah, I agree.
And just about the the patron's support comment too, right? Um I don't think it's appropriate for us to go out and canvass the community and say, hey, do you guys wanna flag on on the library? And if everybody goes yay, or no, we don't wanna see a flag, and it comes a lot of tension, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I I think, I think I would have liked to see more people supporting this from the community, right? And say, this is what we want. Um I I'm not saying we go out and ask for that that feedback, but you know, something to consider, like, it came to us uh for just a couple patrons. We haven't had one for ninety years, right? So um you know, this is a big decision, absolutely big decision, I think.
Okay.
So Tom, something that, Tom, were you gonna say something?
I would say. Well, no, I. Yeah.
No, I I was just gonna say that, you know, the idea of of having the admin bring it, you know, to investigate
Yeah.
is is not something I would wanna throw at an admin who just started a week, you know, so I would definitely wanna defer this for a later date.
Oh, no, it's, yeah. We agree.
I just don't, I just don't think that this warrants any urgency.
Okay. Okay.
We agree, yeah.
So why don't we, we plan on revisiting it um at the September around the September timeframe, so we could, we could bring it to the admin assistant information in September, and then we can bring it it to the board in October.
For our children.
I.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say we even push it off further.
I think.
Yeah, so we have to pu- we have to put that pri- that that prioritization list together, right?
September's too.
Punch.
And prioritize it, it's gonna be on the list.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but I think we need to pro- prioritize, you know, some of the.
Prioritize it, the list is fine, just.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this is fine.
Press some other things.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
I wanna listen to that.
Sounds good.
Um any other questions for Tom on the director's report? So I think with that we have public input, any public input?
Hi.
Yeah?
Question clarification, so I know we were talking about installation of the carpet.
Mm-hmm.
Um from what I was previously, under the impression that we were gonna order carpet and that fresh carpet was gonna be installed. But that sounds like it's changed a bit. We talked about the timeline of the carpet installation, to how does the cleaning up, the the tiles that are currently installed?
Right.
To how does the cleaning of the the tiles that are currently installed?
Oh no wait 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 you have to slow down we thought we were buying new ti- we thought it was completely new new carpet didn't we?
That's my our impression was that.
We all thought it was new carpet. Is that not the case? Because we were there were concerns.
The uh so uh the town administrator working with the carpet company and with the installer determined that the number of carpet squares that were there. Were enough to install fresh.
Wow.
The ones that so they didn't buy any more carpet squares?
So.
Wow. You can't.
What what took the eight weeks and or the nine nine to ten weeks?
Yeah why have we been waiting? That that's not what our our impression was that we were gonna it was gonna be completely new carpet. Because the um tiles had been ruined and the whole the design was off so they're saying that they're gonna be able to make it look perfect.
That they're gonna be that that they're that some tile that the tiles can be reused and that they have additional tiles that they can use and and sufficient to lay down the pattern.
So that they are they gonna reuse?
So.
Do we vote on this?
Well we voted to proceed with replacement of all the tiles.
Yeah so that is against what we voted as trustees.
So do we know I guess just to make sure we're all talking about the same thing do we know for a fact that they're gonna the one the new tiles that they've put down? As part of the the botched repair are those ones gonna be reused or are they?
Mm-hmm.
Like are they tearing them up and then reusing them?
Uh I believe they they've 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 said that they can uh remove the uh adhesive that was on them and reuse them.
They're pulling them off.
Some of them were trims or yeah some of them were shaved. We retold some of them were shaved and everything.
They're not I mean I'm I'm sure they're not gonna be using those right right there I know that there's some of them were cut now they're not gonna be using that.
It's completely different though in what we thought we were and the way we talked to the public about it too and why we had to wait so long.
It's completely different.
So what what happened in these ten weeks?
Cuz we thought it was completely covered.
Since we voted to replace the entire carpet do you know?
Yeah.
Um as I understand it it was negotiation with the uh the manufacturer of the carpets going back to the architectural uh schema. And working with the installers to determine whether what the what the pattern was intended to be. And whether we had sufficient materials in order to lay that down.
Wow. Were they able to get additional tiles from the same batch from of the of the carpet? I'm totally surprised.
It doesn't sound like they.
I don't I don't think so. Oh yeah I don't.
I don't I don't know if any additional tiles were for sure.
So there there were but one thing I guess I would be curious about is there were there it still is part of the previous carpet still installed right? That presumably was not water damaged cuz I believe the water only came in athlete.
Right.
But but it's a different color so the all the old carpet from the first installation has to be replaced.
I.
That I guess that was that was the concern is that they couldn't match.
That's what we were told. It it definitely was at the same color.
It doesn't I I I don't know.
This is my question.
I know I don't I don't think I don't think any of the original carpeting from the original laying of the carpet is still there.
But it doesn't sound like it took a year.
Okay.
I think this is all when the carpet squares were purchased to to install. Those are the those are the ones that.
So they've inventoried all of those carpet tiles and confirm that they now have this four by four grid enough tiles to put through the whole thing.
Right.
Uh and so so you're saying or maybe I misunderstood when when they laid when they laid the carpet down that wasn't done correctly.
Yeah.
Was that completely new for that entire room?
Half the room.
Half the room it wasn't the whole room.
They only got half of it.
Okay.
No 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 they.
Okay. There's still there's a whole bunch of there's tiles that weren't hit. No but I'm saying I I was saying did we was the old carpet for the entire room removed okay.
So.
It never was removed like then when when they're redone the redo after the flood. No cuz you can see the old one cuz we were comparing the two right cuz the old car whereas the old because that one yeah. Okay okay but what we thought what was told to us is that that was gonna be the entire room was gonna be all new carpet so I'm I'm kinda shocked.
No no so uh let let me can I can I try and lay out can I believe this has happened so.
That's what we were. Yeah. Yeah.
They I believe they were installing entirely they were replacing everything.
Right.
But in doing so they'd only gotten so far as to remove the water damage portion and they'd started installing into that area but I believe I think there was in. The the original carpet some of that was still there but I think that was gonna get removed and replaced as well so.
Right that's what I'm talking about this one was supposed to be completely all new.
Yeah. Originally yes.
What we talked about and voted as a trustee group.
Yeah. Well so so we're getting to that so then now the current state is we have a half old original carpet a little bit of incorrectly install installed new carpet.
For half half yeah.
It got they got halfway with the new carpet yeah so that so so now it's so now it's half new and there's still a little bit of original carpet okay?
Yeah they got for a while.
Yeah yeah halfway.
It was a little bit more than that was.
Such as.
And then what we had voted on was to say we we wanted to throw away essentially everything and get an entirely new batch. And do the whole thing all at once I think that's what we had all.
We thought that was.
That's what we thought was happening.
That's what we were told we were told that.
That that's yeah so that's what I'm trying to recap so so I think what we should probably do is.
Yeah.
Triple check with the manufacturer the installer and the town. That those carpet squares that they're gonna try and reuse will be good to be reinstalled cuz our our main concern was that. That the ones that that they had already installed were not um were not gonna be reusable.
Were not that reusable yeah.
Because you know cuz.
And they were installed incorrectly not.
Yes they I mean they were absolutely installed correctly uh bulk in terms of the pattern.
Well can we talk to.
Alright alright can we can we just stop and go back to Sarah's what your original point was question?
Can we talk about as a committee?
Yeah.
I think you talk about.
My original question is just I know that when they were s- just straight going to remove tile and put new tile in that went really quickly I didn't know. What changes to the timeline we could expect with removing and then trying to clean I'm just trying to get an idea for. Just from my own sanity what the timeline might look like um so if they do have to kind of clean some I didn't know if that adds do you extra time?
I mean some of these tiles are I mean not only besides the cutting you can see stains on them because. You know we've talked about the people who installed them were not careful when they did the install so you already are starting with damaged par- carpet squares that are pulling up.
Right.
And you can see you know where they're already popping up the adhesive is still stuck to the back even if they can remove that adhesive. The carpet is separating a little bit from the backing even if they can like glue it all together you're still using a compromised product which is not what the trustees voted on and was also.
Right yeah.
Mm-hmm. You know it's a safety issue you have kids that are running and there are toddlers that are learning how to walk and this carpet starts to separate we're gonna be back where we started and I think that's the concern here is that. We've waited so long to then kinda do this and not do it correctly is just.
I think we all would agree with you there I think the question would be if if they've done the assessment I'm gonna.
I think we did I think.
Go to the other side here if they've done the assessment they've looked at the inventory of tiles they've decided that they are. As as they were in the original you know quality and safety and all that stuff and reusable they've probably decided to reuse them I just find that hard to believe.
Mm-hmm.
And they didn't.
Based on what we've heard.
But I mean well you never come to us like. Oh I want we updated. I want we updated.
I I it's they've I think they've intentionally not given us the whole whole information.
I think we should have been updated because that's not we voted on and that's not we communicated to the public.
Yeah. Well my ask uh my ask Doug to investigate?
Yes absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah I don't think we can do anything we're not gonna do anything here in September so.
Yeah we can't do anything but you need to investigate.
Yeah thank you for clarifying.
Yeah that is very good we had no idea.
That's a that's that's all news to us.
None of us know.
I was also just trying to figure out timeline.
Yeah.
Well cuz I I specifically asked William like it's been nine weeks the the carpet should be ready by now why is it has it not you know.
Well I I think. Right yeah.
From a manufacturing perspective I'm assuming that's what the nine weeks was was for them to make the new tiles.
Yeah.
So um I'll reach out to William tomorrow and I will include Tom in the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah thanks.
Um.
So as I understand it this this research has been done by the town.
Right.
Working with the manufacturer for the company working with the installer.
Right.
To determine I mean they they're on board with wanting this to be done right.
Well.
Yeah that's what I would agree with you I mean I believe that everyone's got the right intentions of mine.
And so. Right right.
And presumably they've done that assessment.
And. Right.
But what if it's not correct I what I don't understand I thought it wasn't an issue as far as the insurance that they were gonna pay for it.
Right.
So I don't I just find this I just find this it's not doesn't.
You're right.
Yeah I was was it an order for the carpet placed in the pattern like what happened like so is the order canceled like?
I mine from what it sounds like they didn't order it they just spent ten weeks inventorying and assessing and figuring out what they could do to to uh. Reuse the current stuff so I don't think we're we're just gonna have the same complaints and conversation over an hour so Tom and I will talk to him.
I I. I think we are okay and you'll update us.
Yep.
Do we have and then okay we might have to have an another meeting.
Well certainly if they're planning on starting on Wednesday.
Yeah cuz I I I think we need to we may need to regroup about this.
Yep. Thank you for your question I don't think we can answer your question I mean you know that was my very beginning of the conversation was the timeline for when we could reopen and stuff like that but we're just gonna have to reassess that. So.
Yeah we are.
Okay. Well that was a way good way to end the meeting wow jeez um.
Are we is the filming still going on?
The question of the question of cleaning yeah.
Yeah we had we had.
The issue of cleaning as well I think is important cuz if they're not replacing the whole thing.
That's what I thought.
Correct.
We need to determine what about the old carpet.
Cleaning the the whole structure the integrity of the actual tile.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we need to meet again.
Okay. Uh any other public comment? Okay um so we do have the policy subcommittee meeting scheduled for the seventh which is next something?
Next Wednesday I think.
Next Wednesday?
Yep.
And then our next meeting um is gonna be August twenty eighth um presumably back in conference room A in the meeting's room.
Yep.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right motion made and seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.